It is one o'clock. Calling to order the first meeting of the year, first meeting of the term, Thursday, January 5th, 2023, Gainesville City Commission. Welcome, I'm glad that you all are here and we have a good afternoon ahead of us and we're only going to do afternoon today, there's no evening session planned. We will move through until we're done with the agenda this afternoon. I want to tell you a couple of things, but before we move in, I plan to about every two hours, take a little break, we'll have a recess just to stretch our legs. So keep that in mind and it's not anything earth shaking when we do it, it's just something that I plan to do every couple of hours in every meeting session. We're not going to do a forced march through to finish business, we are going to try to keep clear minds and limber bodies. All right. Madam Clerk.
First item is invocation by Said Khan.
Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me to provide invocation for this first meeting of the new year 2023. Happy New Year. Congratulations to all of you, I listened to your speeches. If you stick to your agenda, I'm sure it will go very well. Appreciate that, thank you. So now here it goes, the invocation starts. Compassionate and merciful God, thank you for the beautiful city of Gainesville that is recognized one of the best places to live in the state of Florida. We know this is the best place anywhere. Dear Lord, bless this meeting of the Gainesville City Commission, of the elected and other officials who work for the city, for the welfare of the Gainesville citizens. We, citizens and officials, all need your guidance and help in making tough decisions. Guide us to the right path, a path that leads us to accomplish our goals. We will have differences of opinion, help us to listen to each other calmly and with patience, and to work as a team towards the common goal, which is the betterment of the lives of the citizens of Gainesville. Dear Lord, help us develop good plans for the future of Gainesville, plans that are realistic and viable. May we work together in solidarity on our shared mission and responsibilities. Amen.
Thank you.
Can I take a picture of you all right now?
Sure.
I mean, there has to be one of those things, you know? Let me get back so I can get everybody. A smile, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to say a couple of words about some of the things that are involved in every agenda. Say a couple of things about some of the things that are involved in every agenda, particularly public comment. I know that there has been frustration on both sides of the dais in the past about public comment. We have a set of rules, I will do my very best to apply those rules to everyone equally. And I'm going to try to remind people of how the light system works regularly. I want this to work as well as you want it to work. Everybody's going to get their time to speak at the right time and I look forward to hearing from you. Now that doesn't mean that we always agree. Sometimes we will, sometimes we won't, but I want everybody to have their opportunity to speak. And I don't want anybody, when I ask them to come to a commission meeting, to say, "I can't go down there, that's not for me." I want everybody to feel comfortable in this room because it belongs to all 141,000 of us. So that said, what we do, for those of you who are not familiar, we're about to go to an item that includes adopting the consent agenda and the regular agenda. When we do that, you'll have an opportunity to speak and public comment on items that are on the consent agenda. If you want to talk about something else, there's another time for that. If you want to talk about items that are on the consent agenda, that's your opportunity. There'll be three minutes, as with everything else. When those agendas are adopted, we'll move on to early public comment. Early public comment means that's your opportunity to talk about anything that is on the regular agenda later in the meeting that you don't want to stay for. If you just want to make a comment that we can hear, but you don't want to stick around for that agenda item, that early public comment is your time to do that. If you're going to speak on one item, you get three minutes. If you're going to speak on more than one item, you get five minutes. If you want to do any public comment, please fill out a card and get it to the clerk so that we can call people up in an orderly fashion. That's why we do it the way we do it, it's not intended to be confusing and I'm trying to talk about it so that people who haven't been here and experienced it can hopefully kind of get in the system. It takes a little while. And I'm going to make some mistakes too, by the way, pretty regularly. So I appreciate you bearing with me on those. When we get to general public comment, that's your opportunity to have three minutes to speak to anything you want to talk about, about pretty much anything, except things that are on the agenda. When you come up for general public comment, when your name is called for that, that's not the time to talk about things that are on the agenda. Now, it's also not time to talk about, to say ugly things about people. It's just not. We don't do personal attacks, that's in the rules, and I'm going to do my best to enforce the rules. You have three minutes at any of these, so I'll talk about the light system in a minute, but try to keep an eye on that so that you can finish your thoughts and organize your thoughts toward that. Every business discussion item, you'll have an opportunity to address in a public comment about that item. Now if you come up and you want to, and get off track and talk about things that are not part of that agenda item, I'm going to ask you to stop. When you come up for comment on an agenda item, please try to talk about that item. That's what our rules ask me to do and I'm going to do my best to enforce the rules that way. We want to give everybody opportunities and we'll have opportunities in the future to have discussions about all this stuff down the road. But these are our rules and I want to try to enforce them as best I can. The light system, when you walk up to speak, when you get up there, a green light's going to come on, like it is right now. That means you are good to go. When you have one minute left, you get through two full minutes of being up there, that yellow light is going to come on. When the yellow light comes on, you've got 60 seconds left. When the red light comes on, I'm going to ask you to please finish your comments. If we think about it that way, if we all understand the light system, we can probably get through anything just fine. So, that's how we do public comment. I'm going to do my best, I hope you will do your best, and we will move on. Madam Clerk, what's up?
Next item is the adoption of the agenda, including consent and regular items.
And I see there are some, there's a list of...
Okay, the first update is 2023-25, Mayor Harvey Award Committee Discussion, File 2022-274, Recruitment Plan for Charter Officers, File 2022-767. Let me back up. The first item is an added item, the second item is updated text and updated backup, the third item, 767, is added backup as well, and that is Charter Officers Annual Performance Evaluations and Pay Increases. File 2023-11, Winter Usage, and 2023, Update on Status of Billing and Staffing Issues, Updated Text and Backup. File 2022-177, Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut, reinstatement of Single Family Future, Single Family Future Land Use Zoning and Zoning Categories, Updated Text and Backup. File 2022-179, Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut, reinstatement of Development Compatibility and reinstatement of Occupancy Limitations for Student Rental Properties, item was removed. And then File 2023-24, Alachua County Legislative Public Delegation Hearing, January 10th, 2023, Added Item.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt these agendas? Thank you, there's a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent and regular agendas as described, and we will hear opportunity now for public comment on the consent agenda.
Our speaker is Nathan Scott.
Yes, good afternoon, Happy New Year. I have a question related to the adoption of the consent agenda. Previously, it appears the agenda was revised, there was an item on there that I think dealt with a large amount of money for development on parks or something like that where there was a question related to lighting. I didn't see that being removed on the narrative up there, but that's what I had a question on. It seemed to have insufficient information and explanation as to, I forgot what the item was now because you can't see the agenda because the new one has replaced it, so you can't see what's disappeared. So in terms of transparency, if that item's been removed, I just, I don't have the ability and I couldn't find my screenshot to address my concern related to that item, but there was a term of art in there related to vendor street, vendor lighting or something like that, vendor owned lighting, and I'm trying to understand and get better appreciation on what that is in terms of who's paying for what or what the transactional details of that are. And with respect to the added item for the legislative delegation, I hope that GRU customers will come out and force for that and, you know, express their concern about the ongoing mismanagement of GRU and its unaffordable rates. There's $6 million in intercompany loans where electric customers who have the highest electric rates, residential rates in the state of Florida for generating utility, the rates are unaffordable, gas customers who even have higher rates are being forced to cross-subsidize Grucom to the tune of $6 million in intercompany loans on top of existing debt because Grucom's nearly insolvent. So I hope people will come out and speak to that and get this commission to, through our legislative delegation, to get some public scrutiny and state scrutiny on this, including the Florida Public Service Commission, take a look at GRU's rate structure and everything that's wrong with that, because some attention needs to be given, rightly so, to this utility which used to be Florida's flagship municipal, I mean Florida, excuse me, used to be Florida's flagship municipal utility, but now it's no longer the utility owned by those that serve, it's owned by Wall Street bankers, thank you. Excuse me, I'm...
So Mr. Scott, to try to answer your question, the, I believe you're talking about 2022-772, the award and cooperative purchasing contract authorization for forced park improvements, that was moved last week from consent over to the regular agenda.
I don't see it in this agenda.
It's, Madam Clerk? Yeah, you can go ahead and try.
Oh, I do, yes, I have to stand, please.
Okay. Okay. All right, anyone else on the consent agenda?
Good afternoon, welcome all of you either to your new position, Mr. Mayor, or to the new commissioners, and welcome back those of you that are still here, Joe Beatty. And I wasn't going to talk to this, but I'm a little confused, Mr. Mayor, about your explanation of talking to this, you said you can talk to items on the consent agenda. I believe we have the opportunity, and I hope that the rest of the commission would listen, to ask you, it's the adoption of the consent and regular agendas that I think is the proposition that we would be talking to, and so if we want something pulled from the consent agenda, I think that's our opportunity and I would hope you would all be listening when a citizen asks to have something pulled from that and put on the regular agenda. I hope you'd pay attention because you have many items, you spend sometimes close to a million dollars, sometimes over a million dollars on consent agenda, and people don't know we've previously asked to have some of those items pulled. Sometimes you have what seemingly insignificant items, accepting a vacancy and things like that, announcing that you received a grant, some of those things, changing a calendar. Some of those items could be put on the regular agenda so that people would know what's happening. There are a lot of things you could be very proud of that you pass on the consent agenda and people don't even know they fly by. So, Mr. Ward, if you would maybe either correct me that we are allowed to speak to the adoption of the consent agenda, that the commissioners might change their vote or amend the proposal. I think people need to know we have that opportunity and really, especially you new commissioners, know that when we speak, there's a reason, and I really hope that in the future, if we ask to have something pulled and discussed openly, that you would do it. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty, and I will address that. The, first of all, the best time to talk to any commissioners about potentially pulling something off the agenda is before the meeting. The best time to talk to any of us and advocate for things is before, because there's a great opportunity then for back and forth and to really understand things. This is a last second sort of thing, when you're at the lectern. The best opportunity to advocate with commissioners is before the meeting starts. My interpretation supported, well, okay, the, my interpretation, supported by our legal staff, is that public comment on this item is an opportunity to ask questions about items that are on the consent agenda, because they're not on the regular agenda for other discussion. So if you see something on there that you have questions about, that is the purpose of that. Otherwise, it is administrative. Passing agendas is administrative. So that's, that's my answer to that, I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting about it. Do we have anyone else, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agendas as amended, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Madam Clerk?
Next item is early public comment, and our first speaker is Nathan Scott.
Okay, now these are, again, for everyone, this is to speak to items that are on the regular agenda later on, and when you speak, at this point, you don't get to speak on it later in the agenda.
Yes, good afternoon and again, Happy New Year. So I want to speak on several items related to the zoning change items, 2022-177, 2022-178, and so on. Again, those zoning changes and the ongoing destruction of Gainesville's neighborhoods and their character, the hands of the city commission. Respectfully, I would ask that the zoning changes made by the city commission be repealed and not referred to the planning board. So again, repeal in their entirety, not refer with some patchwork, middle ground. Again, no one wanted this, it was overwhelmingly opposed by your constituents and the city at large, yet you did it anyway. So again, the time has come to repeal this and show the citizens of Gainesville, your constituents, that you actually care and listen to their concerns instead of continuing to destroy the Gainesville that we've loved and lived, that doesn't even, it's not even recognizable anymore. It's a cauldron of monstrosities known as the standard, zero setbacks and so forth. So again, please repeal, don't refer this to the planning board, don't make excuses, don't make middle ground, just repeal it. It's real simple, do the right thing. With respect to the item that was moved from the consent to the regular agenda, if you look at the recommendation, NGU Sports Lighting LLC to purchase sports lighting via owner direct purchase, that's the issue I had, what does owner direct purchase mean? Typically, you know, there's no justification or explanation for what that means and that could have impact for, potentially for GRU customers, as to lighting and issues related to the use of the lighting. As to the other items on the regular agenda, GRU winter energy uses and staffing, again, there are over 5,000 customers that have not had their bills accurately read, GRU's bringing in additional resources, I understand that, but people, GRU customers are struggling to afford their GRU bills, that does not get the attention due by this commission. You guys are more concerned with virtue signaling, more concerned with doubling your salaries on top of the 9.6% raise, and that's not appropriate. The attention should be on fixing the real problems facing Gainesville, the homicides, the shootings, the violent crime, GRU rates. I am speaking to this issue, Commissioner Ward, I don't need you to moderate the content of my speech.
But I do need to moderate the content.
I don't, I think you need to stand down and just let me speak, thank you.
Mr. Scott, stick to the item.
I am speaking to the issue on the agenda item, thank you. The update on the winter usage, again, I think they're good tips, but it's gaslighting. GRU has the highest electric rates in the state of Florida for residential customers for generating utility. That's a fact, it's uncontroverted fact. By comparison, even with the most recent increase in fuel adjustment granted by the Florida Public Service Commission, FPL residential electric rates at 1,000 KWH are $53, approximately $53 less. Again, for those listening at home, FPL residential electric rates at 1,000 KWH are approximately $53 a month less per 1,000 kilowatt hours than GRU rates for electric. That's a lot of money that could be used, so while, you know, Commissioner Ward or Mayor Ward, you know, you're talking about the Biden administration and all those things on the home front, people cannot afford their excessive GRU electric bills along with $6 a dozen eggs. So we need to focus on the problems facing Gainesville, and that's one of them, along with GRU's mountain debt and Grucom being financially insolvent. And then final item on the charter officer raises, you know, I'm fine with based on performance, 2.5% increase, but I know for the record, this commission gave itself, doubled its salaries on top of a 9.6% automatic raise. Your charter officers aren't getting a 9.6% raise or doubling their salaries, your dedicated police officers, two of which are in this room, three of which are in this room, are not having their salaries doubled, our dedicated firefighters and first responders are not having their salaries doubled, but this commission feels necessary to increase its salaries.
That's not on the agenda.
That is on the, I'm speaking.
No, Mr. Scott, you will, we both will either stick to it or your time is over, sir.
So are we going to live in a totalitarian regime? Are we going to live in a totalitarian regime?
Mr. Scott's time is finished, thank you. Your time is finished, sir, because you did not obey the rules of the commission. That is how I'm going to do it, yeah. And if we have outbursts, we're going to move on from that as well. So let's not do that.
Our next speaker is July Thomas.
The next outburst, Mr. Scott, will be the last one today.
All right. I will take my time here to speak about two items on the agenda. The first one has to do with GRU staffing. My understanding is that last year, the city began to move toward automated meter readings, in the process moved the human meter reading positions to temporary, and as a result, there's been staffing issues. I've got friends who haven't gotten bills for several months and then all of a sudden have been hit with several months all at once. These are people who are living paycheck to paycheck, they have unequal billing periods. This should be a priority, these are the types of things that it is the responsibility of the commission to administer on a week-to-week basis. The reason why we've ended up in this morass is because we had a commission on their way out who decided to spend almost the entire thrust of the city government chasing down this exclusionary zoning issue. We've ceded the commission and now at the last hour here, there were some items added to the agenda to delay the vote further and to drag this out more. You all know how you're going to vote. I was sitting next to you all last year when we were asked this question, this is what the campaign turned into. You know how you're going to vote now. You spent all last year knocking on everyone's doors, asking them to vote. Now we're knocking back, telling you to vote.
That was it for early public comment.
Okay, so now we move on to general public comment. Correct? Go ahead, Jim.
Our first speaker is Robert Mounts, followed by Andrea Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Robert Mounts, Gainesville native, former president of the University Park Neighborhood Association, which I have represented a number of times on development issues here before this commission. And my comment, as I mentioned in a email to you yesterday, the single biggest challenge I feel you face is to set the tone for your meetings and the interaction with the public, which is positive, collaborative, welcoming, and builds trust. And already I can see we're, could easily fall back into the pattern of a very toxic atmosphere that no one really wants, except those who don't want you to succeed. And I want you to succeed, you're a Democrat, I'm a Democrat, all of you are Democrats. We definitely want this commission to succeed and to build a better climate for our reasoned public debate, and there's many ways to do that, and I think it's probably not enough just to say, "I'm going to enforce the rules," Mr. Mayor. We need to have a conversation of what those rules should be. You know, among yourselves in your policy meetings, you need to have a conversation about the rules and figure out how can you make the public feel more welcome. There's little things you can do, for example, you can ask a person who's spoken, "If I heard you right, this is your main point, is that, am I correct about that? Does anybody on the dais have a question about what was just said?" That can generate a dialogue, sure, it's going to exceed the time limit, but it's more collaborative, and that's just one thing. Another thing that was done a few times on major issues in the past was to ensure that public comment comes before you telegraph how you're going to vote, whether there's a motion on the floor or not. You know, if you've all indicated how you're going to vote, the public feels like, well, there's no point in me coming up here and trying to persuade you now, you know? So that's a key change that could be made. And I would encourage you to have this conversation, look at those things that will actually promote a feeling of dialogue and collaboration, like, you know, candidate Gary Gordon talked about, and maybe back in those days it was easier to do, and we're trying to recover really from a period of time of toxicity which is in no one's best interest. So that's my comment, my... So that's my comment, my challenge to all of you. Have that discussion and treat your job, you know, serve with humility. Serve with, as a servant to the people. Have that conversation. Include all of us in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mount. So I would make a point to something that you spoke about there. We voted as a body more than a year ago, and I can't tell you exactly when, but we voted as a body to do exactly the process you're talking about when there's an action item. Have the item presented, have the presentations, then hear from the public, and then deliberate as a commission. That's, we slipped back into the other way of doing it, and my hope is that we will do what we said we were going to do and follow that procedure. The item is introduced, presented, whether it's someone on the commission presenting or staff, and then we hear from the public about the item, and then we deliberate as a commission. And if we want to change that, we'll have opportunities to do that at some point in the future in a rules discussion. So thank you for bringing that up. I'm glad we had the opportunity to clarify the way that that's supposed to do. Commissioner Buck, thank you.
Am I doing this right?
Yes, you are, sir. Well, actually, you did it right before, and when your light goes off, you're good. You're good to go.
So it's day one for three of us, and what Mr. Mount said, I very much appreciate, because the key, Madam Clerk, is that is, in fact, one of the agenda items that we have for the end of this afternoon, which is the opportunity to basically revise or provide information about, and I'm going to use these terms interchangeably, process, protocol, procedure, so that we're doing, we're doing a really good job collaborating and working together, even if we disagree. So I appreciate the point. I just wanted to clarify, for the mayor, we actually have an item that's very similar, probably not exact, to some of the comments that just came up. And we have that, and it will be addressed also and compiled by the clerk for the January 13th retreat, Mr. Mayor. And those rules, those protocols and processes were last revised in 2019, and I think this is an excellent time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So who's next for a public?
Our next speaker is Andrea Rizzo, followed by Nathan Scott.
And keep in mind, these are for things that are not on the agenda today.
City Commissioners, Mayor, a few weeks ago, the commission voted to significantly increase your salaries for the next fiscal year. I'm actually not here to tell you that I oppose that vote. In fact, I always felt that it was absurd that I earned more than the city mayor as an entry-level worker bee at the university. Certainly, you voted for this change, as you noticed that the cost of living has skyrocketed all across the state. My rent alone was raised $175 in one year. I was planning to leave this apartment anyway, but the next unfortunate tenant, before the next tenant, the rate will be $325 more than I currently pay. With such exorbitant housing costs and stagnant wages from the university and the hospital, the largest employers in the city, it is not, it is no surprise that Gainesville is experiencing an affordable housing crisis. With this in mind, I ask, is it helpful to destroy the homeless camps near Grace Marketplace? Five or so years ago, you closed Bow Didley Plaza for renovations. When the plaza reopened a year later, almost nothing had changed, except shifting all the homeless people out of the plaza elsewhere. We pay for your new salary. We expect you to work for the people of Gainesville, all of them. The bare minimum we ask is that you work to understand the community's needs and address them. Please stop the assault on the most vulnerable. Your current attempts are tone deaf at best and violent at worst. I urge you to reconsider your stance on this matter. No sleeps until housing is available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Scott, followed by Joe Beatty.
Yes, good afternoon. So I want to speak to the proposed sale of Grucom assets, either the system as a whole or the trunk radio system. We've read about that over the holidays. There's been statements made by then Commissioner Ward. The referendum that was approved by the voters, that the commission enacted, doesn't apply. So I want to speak to this because, again, Grucom is practically financially insolvent. It barely can cover its existing debt service payments. I was shocked to learn, because it hasn't been transparent, that there's been $6 million of intercompany loans from gas customers and electric customers subsidizing Grucom, which is an impermissible cross-subsidation of a practically insolvent utility system that's covered by the debt covenants and the mountain of debt that GRU. But, you know, this commission likes to engage in revisionist history. The only problem is it's not true. He told the voters that they should not vote for independent governing board for GRU because they would sell the utility and raise your rates. That's not, in fact, what's happened. You, this commission, has repeatedly raised GRU rates. You guys put a poison pill in effect, which requires a referendum for disposable significant assets, of which the trunk radio system is a significant asset of GRU. And now we hear Commissioner Ward or Mayor Ward and charter officers saying, well, the referendum doesn't apply. The debt covenants might. So I think we need to take a look at that, because I think judicial relief in terms of declaratory judgment might be appropriate on that, because I don't think GRU customers should be left holding a $6 million intercompany loan on top of all the debt that Grucom has by giving something away to the county that they want to buy, because the debt service numbers are consistent with, you know, all over the place. But the debt needs to include the $6 million intercompany loans. And I'll leave it at that, but the gaslighting needs to stop, and you guys need to focus on reducing our electric rates that are unaffordable. Respect to the doubling the salaries, Commissioner Buck, you're new to the commission. I'd really love to hear your opinion on whether you believe this is fiscally responsible and warranted in light of a 9.6% automatic increase and the doubling of the salaries on top of that. I don't believe it's equitable, but I'd certainly love to hear your opinion as an incoming commissioner on that, so that we know from the public, because Commissioner Ward at the time voted no, but gave no explanation, yet he benefits from having his salary doubled. I just think it's wrong. People can't afford their electric bills. And finally, I think I've been very polite at this podium today, except when I've been rudely interrupted by Mayor Ward. You know, if you want to be a tyrant, that's fine, but I would caution you against regulating the content of my speech. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Joe Beatty, followed by Renz Torres.
Good afternoon and welcome again. I was pleased to be at your swearing-in and at the commencement of this new commission. And, you know, I hope all of you were listening carefully when Mr. Buck spoke, because he referred to the budget and financial, this financial situation and stuff. All of you have lofty goals, and for 15 years, I have been here trying to work with different commissions, representing things that would affect the least fortunate among us. And I've tried to be collaborative with you. I right now offer that any time you have something, I have a longer view than I think anybody sitting up there. Fifteen years of sitting in the City Commission meetings, working against the biomass plant, which, even though we were mischaracterized, we were looking out for the welfare of the city and especially those least fortunate among us. Frequently in the last couple of years, I've heard presentations that I could quote you the time and the date that this was previously done. I can give background. I'm happy many of you have my number. Those of you don't, you're welcome to it. I'd be, I'd be, you know, more than willing to fill you in and tell you even go back and watch a certain commission meeting and see what happened. You can't do this in a vacuum. For the past probably seven to 10 years, that's what's happened. New commissioners come on, haven't been part of this, and they don't know. And you come on with these wonderful agenda, and the foundation's crumbling. I've been saying that. Others have been saying that. Some of us have different manner than others, but we all care. And it seems that we're perceived as being negative. We're not. We're giving of our time and our talents, and some people of their professional expertise to try to help and work as a team. Please don't cut the public out. Please listen to us. And the one thing, aside from Mr. Buck's remarks, that was not referred to by any of you, is really the foundational situation, the Auditor General's report, our financial condition. When the Audit Committee gets reports, they get sent, and they've been put on the consent agenda, contrary to citizens asking for them to be openly discussed. People aren't watching all of your little committee meetings. It's like divide and conquer. So please, you new commissioners especially, and those of you that were here before, please listen to the public and do the public's business in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. So I do want to point out that the audit that we received, that the Audit Committee talked about, was on the regular agenda following the Audit Committee meeting. Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Renz Torres, followed by July Thomas.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me. My name is Renz Torres, and I'm speaking out against the homeless camp sweep tomorrow. Folks don't already know, there's a sweep planned of homeless camps surrounding Grace on grounds of trespassing on public land. The sweep is cruel and unusual punishment, criminalizing homelessness itself. The commission is allowing these people to be swept when there is no other place for them to go. The trespass notice on site advertises Grace, but a lot of the folks at the camp have been trespassed from Grace or can't go there for any number of reasons, be it being traumatized there, poor staff treatment, or feeling unsafe with other guests there. There's no other place for these people to go once they're swept. No shelter and no housing. As we all know, there's a severe dearth of affordable housing in Gainesville, and I know it's on the table today to consider reinstating single-family exclusive zoning. Revoking the zoning changes is going to make our shortage of affordable housing worse. Don't make the housing crisis worse by criminalizing homelessness and sweeping people with no place to go. Don't make it harder to live here by making it harder to build more housing. Once a neighborhood is locked to single-family housing, all growth is forced outwards once it's infilled. Allow more housing to be built and for neighborhoods to grow, then we'll have places for these folks experiencing crisis like those about to be swept, for those of us like me who will never be rich enough to own a home, and for everyone to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Kimber Tuff. July Thomas, followed by Kimber Tuff.
Yeah, I just want to echo the calls from those who advocate for unhoused neighbors to put a pause on the sweeps of the camps. I know this is not a new issue, specifically with those camps, but also camps around Gainesville, but there is still no long-term plan for what to do with those people once they are forced out of those camps. This doesn't all fall on the people on the commission. This doesn't all fall on John DeCarmine. And again, it's an ongoing problem. The issue is, once we disperse these people throughout the community, then we have to go back through the whole rigmarole, and we're starting back over. So if we could put a pause on them and come up with some plan, as has been echoed, Grace Marketplace is doing great work, but it is not for everyone. Everyone is not welcome there for reasons to do with people who are trying to enter Grace Marketplace and also some of the people on staff there. So please, let's halt these sweeps. There's no reason to do them tomorrow, just after the New Year, specifically when we are in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kimber. I'm a social worker. I work at Southern Legal Counsel. You would have received a comment from us in your email today regarding this issue. I brought a copy of the trespass notice that folks at the camp were given. I can bring it up and give it to y'all if you haven't seen it. I don't doubt that maybe you don't even know this issue is happening. I want to represent my friends that live in this camp. This is the third time that this city has swept them in the last three months. This camp has existed in some form for the last two years. During the COVID pandemic, you've swept them. Regardless of how much I've pled or who've come out to help them move, the material reality of the trauma inflicted each time that you do this, it makes my job harder of working with them. It makes them further distanced and seeking resources. This is city land that they're on. It is fenced, but you're trespassing them or threatening them with arrest. Is the, are the police even telling you this? They're listing that the resources available are Grace Marketplace. Most of these people can't even get in. They're banned in trespass. Do you even know that your police lobbied to make that happen? They forced the hand of Grace Marketplace to make sure that the trespasses lasted at least six months to the state statute, and they refused to respond to 911 calls because Grace was overturning them too frequently? Because that's what social services should do. You know, people come in, have an inflict, like some issue one day, it doesn't mean they have to have six months to a year of an issue later. You're taking them away from food, showers, laundry, job resources, computers. This is the material reality of people that are unsheltered. I've had meetings with some of y'all individually over the years. Like, if you don't understand that shelter at Grace, that's a particular homeless type of population. Unsheltered is its own thing. Those are different communities. They don't overlap a lot. People don't want Grace, or they can't when they want to, which is what's happening right now. This is not the only camp you're sweeping. You're sweeping them all. I understand the law, obviously, of this aspect. You have the right to do it. Should you be, is the question. There's no housing options. People's rents are increasing. People are facing eviction. There's no available housing. Like, I know Ward, and I know Eastman, you're on the board of Grace. You understand the reality of how difficult it is, even for the resource that exists, to put people in housing. Now we're further distancing them away from resources. And they're currently, right now, the camp is on the old Dignity Village. Obviously, it's behind a fence. It's public property. They can, because it's fenced, still be swept. But should they? Where else are they going to go? Every time you do it, I'm out there helping to move people 50 feet so that they're not in harm's way that next time, you know? But then a week later, it's, here it comes again. This is an issue. Do you even know about it?
I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Speaker is Mathieu Humanos.
Welcome to all the new Commissioners. Mathieu Humanos with the Gainesville-Liatrow County Association of Realtors. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I am in favor, and the Gainesville-Liatrow County Association of Realtors is in favor of not going back to the occupancy limits, which was recommend, and this was also recommended by the city's consultants to remove the no more than three unrelated.
So are you speaking to that agenda item?
It was removed from the agenda. This is an exclusionary zoning practice. Think about a few young adults who want to live together to cut costs, or the example that I always like to give is the Golden Girls, that when, it is now allowed because it has been removed, but if the occupancy limit is put back in, then it would not be able to. This also increases available rooms, and we need the inventory. Supply is not meeting demand. While Liatrow County added nearly 6,300 rental units between 2000 and 2019, we lost units renting for $1,000 or less. Units at or below $1,000 fell by over 2,600 units between that time. And then I just also want to comment to the fact that this item was removed yesterday. Trying to get people involved and to come out here to speak to you guys, and then having it removed the day before, it's very difficult. Members will call and say, you know, like, what's the deal blaming me, essentially, for that involvement. So just a point of note, I know Commissioner Buck mentioned that the processes was going to be on the, on the agenda later, so, you know, that is something, to get good feedback, you got to have a good process. So just, please take that in mind. Everybody's time is valuable. So appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay. So there's no one else for general public comment? So you got a card? Okay. So we'll remind everyone, if you want to make a public comment, filling out a card is important. He does have one, so go ahead, sir.
I am sovereign despot, holder in decourse, King Johnny Bernard Booth, Uniform Commerce Co., 1-308, sovereign worldwide, global American kingdom, and owner of the United States. I am the living entity, the living truth. I am the living entity, the living true government. Ad hoc, I'm talking to all commercial governments, no matter you're in this state, this city, next city, as I say, ad hoc, that's attention to all governments listening on this cricket. Blue campaign, blue star, blue notice. All governments, you need to commence with stopping the modern day human trafficking. It doesn't matter how much insolvent notes you make, how many debtors' notes you make, Federal Reserve notes you make, that's all debtors' notes. Debt can make money. Debt makes nothing but debt. Now, as me and Trump has already spoken to you in 2014, we're supposed to be moving towards Federal Reserve dollars out of the Federal Reserve notes. Because these notes only build up to insolvency, and if they cannot pay for them, they lose their homes, they lose their kids, they lose their houses, regardless of what your status quo is, or your legal status, since I hold a lawful status, whatever status quo you decide to go by. Now, a warning was given to all of these governments in 2014. These are going to continue to move forward regardless of how much commercial fraudulent currency they come up with. Because it's still a human trafficking, including with the sweep that you're talking about. That's human trafficking also. Because definition, human trafficking, exploitation, and forced situation, forced from here to there. All right. I am the indigenous, Aboriginal, sovereign despot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's it for public comment. Madam Clerk, what's, what's next?
Our next item is 2023-25, Mayor Harvey L. Ward Jr. Committee Discussion, with the recommendation that the Commission discuss and take action, deemed necessary.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So just a quick introductory to what I'm talking about here. We have a couple of ad hoc committees that have been on the, on the list for a good while, including Digital Access, which hasn't met in, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but well over a year, and the Environmental Justice Subcommittee, which has not met in some time, and, and is, it's just my opinion, but a little duplicative of several other boards and committees that, that we have. We also very clearly have a, an interest on the Commission in a Public Safety Committee, which I think would be useful as an ad hoc committee as well. I would love to hear the Commission's thoughts and any motion that anyone might wish to make, welcome Commissioner Saka, regarding the sunsetting of Digital Access and the Environmental Justice Subcommittee's and the potential addition of a Public Safety Committee. That's going to be Commissioner Chestnut. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Public Safety, so it would be Fire Department and Police Department.
Yes, that's my intent.
And then we would be able to really focus, focus on issues related to both of them. I think, I like the idea, because it would give us time to really delve into the budget issues, delve into policy issues addressing them, and that often that we don't have the time during a regular meeting to really thoroughly address the issue. I'm trying to remember if, under Public Safety in the past, if it was Police, Fire, and Public Works? No? Some years ago, you'd have to have been here during the Ice Age. But I believe it was, I believe it, Aaron, do you remember? I believe it was Fire, Police, and Public Works.
Yes, Public Works stood alone.
Okay. All right, then, stood alone. Well, Public Works, I'm very interested in seeing get a good focus as well. But I would, I like the idea. I would be happy to put a motion on the floor at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, too, can get behind the creation of a Committee for Public Safety. I remember in one of our recent conversations where we were talking about the K-9 unit, one of the concerns from the community was that there was a desire to create more participa, participation, or an opportunity for public participation in these types of conversations. So inasmuch as this Public Safety Committee would allow for some robust involvement and input from the community, this is certainly something that I could support.
Okay, thank you. And that looks, I'm getting used to the new lighting system up here. It's, it's new to me as well. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you. I will defer to the rest of our more experienced Commissioners as to the creation of these committees. I want to speak specifically to the elimination of these two other committees, particularly Digital Access. It was something I was intimately involved with, pushing for bridging our digital divide, ensuring that people have access to high-speed internet in their home at an affordable rate. That Committee went on for a number of years. Commissioner Ward, you were on there. We have a lot of good data out about what could work, what would work. We came up with plans as to how a rollout of high-speed municipal broadband could be rolled out. That was not accepted by the Commission. I think at this point, it's on hold, and as much as it pains me to say, I think that the right way to move forward is decide, is to move forward with our standing committees into the future, and to sunset some of these committees that were always intended to be temporary. Doesn't mean that municipal broadband and the expansion of internet is something that's not going to continue to be a priority for at least me on this Commission, but I think sunsetting it is the right thing to do policy-wise.
All right, we have clear board. Commissioner Chestnut, ma'am.
Thank you. I move to, ready with a motion? Somebody else wanted, I think Ed wanted to speak.
Let me go ahead and hear from Commissioner Book as the, and by the way, I realize that I have quite unintentionally missed the order in which we were originally going to do things. So before you put a motion on the floor, we'll have Commissioner Book and then come back for a motion. Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So very similarly, I actually reported when I was with the City of Gainesville to the Public Safety Committee. It was Commissioner Chestnut. It was primarily Fire and Police, but it was also more broadly Safety Matters. So it wasn't necessarily Public Works, although that could be included. And so I just feel similarly to what the Mayor pro tem, Commissioner Chestnut, said.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go to a public comment on this, if there is any.
Ms. Cobb? Joe Bailey?
Could I hear exactly what the motion is?
There is no motion yet.
So you're going to create the motion after you hear us? Okay. So it's really hard to speak to the motion.
Well, you speak to, speak to the ideas that we presented.
Okay. I really think it's time that you went back to the committee structure as it was probably seven to 10 years ago, at least five, and, and reduce the number of committees. I don't think the General Policy Committee, it was not originally conceived as a place that was essentially a second commission meeting. That was started so that you could have informal discussions, and it was started that there would be no motions and no votes taken at the General Policy. That's how it went. If you go back and look, when Mayor Braddy was at that transition time, when that was created, this was only supposed to be an opportunity to sit and informally talk about things. So I think you need to reduce the number of committees. It's kind of, as I referred to before, it's kind of like a divide and conquer with the citizens. Citizens can't be at those meetings. And I really object to what I've seen happening with these meetings is the Commission micromanaging. You're supposed to be a policy board. You're not supposed to be working committee doing that. We have a lot of highly paid employees. You've got charters. You've got over 100 people making $100,000 a year. I think we have the wherewithal to do as, I believe your, your job really was intended, to charge your charters with carrying out the business and bringing to you all sides of an issue when you need to make a vote. And, you know, you just increased your pay, which is something for another day. I hope you reconsider that, too. You're supposed to be part-time. You're supposed to be, excuse me? Are you, are you control, are you controlling my, my speech?
Ms. Bailey, the orderly operation of the meeting asks that you refer to the item at hand.
Well, the item at hand is the committees, and you breaking these things up into committees. What I'm talking to is the item at hand, and please don't control my speech.
Not controlling your speech, ma'am.
Excuse me, you're interrupting me now, and then when I sit down, you will go and you will characterize what I've just said, as you've done for many people.
Ms. Bailey, I'm going to ask you to please focus on the topic at hand.
Are you going to give me time for the time you keep interrupting me?
I am not, Ms. Bailey. You have three minutes, and you went off a field with it. If you'd like to talk about this, go ahead.
So you're depend, you're deciding on the content of my speech, okay?
No, ma'am, I'm doing the orderly operation of the meeting.
I really don't know that you should be doing this now. You really do need to look at, at the committee structure. You need to weigh home back. You need to look at the history, and, you know, I don't know what motion you're going to make, so I can't ask you before or after it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our next speaker is Tana Silva.
Good afternoon, good New Year, everybody. Welcome aboard, new ones. Okay, speak up. All right. This is probably one of the biggest decisions that, that this Commission can make. It wasn't the Ice Age, but now Commissioner Chestnut is the only one on the dais who has worked, including charters, I think, who has worked with standing committees, and that they were abruptly overturned in Ed Braddy's last meeting of 2016. And since then, the, the governance system of the City Commission has really taken a turn for the worse. The standing committees, I would ask, first of all, I appreciate Commissioner War, Mayor Ward bringing this up, and I would ask that instead of making any kind of decision about what to go, what should not go right now, this has already been discussed a few times. Your policy person presented a ballot for how, you know, the structure of the committees could be made more viable and more useful and involve more public input and from expertise all across the city. And I would ask you, at a minimum, to take that to your workshop next week, when you're going to be talking about the, you know, the public participation, the meetings and so forth, at a minimum, because this is a topic that could change the whole trajectory of city governance, is to get rid of all of those ad hoc committees and, and take the focus away from each Commissioner having his or her own agenda items, like now Commissioner Eastman wants to, you know, go back to the Digital Access thing. Anyway, to, to put this back on the, into discussion and go back to getting rid of all the ad hoc committees, getting rid of, or at least limiting the GPC to a quarterly meeting when you can get together and talk, and if not, make it a regular commission meeting because that's all it's become. So please, this is too important to just make a decision, okay, well, we want this committee, we want, we don't want that committee for right now. It's way too important, and you've already been discussing it. The new people haven't been involved in those discussions, and really take a look at that ballot that your policy person put together and, you know, to give you some points to think about what would be the most useful. This is critical to priority setting for the entire Commission, for the entire city, and for the staff, and it will alleviate a lot of these unnecessary meetings. They went from 132 in 2015 to 303 in 2021.
Ms. Silva, your time's up. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Okay, that's all? Sure, since it's the first meeting, go ahead.
Kim Tanzer, I didn't plan to speak to this issue. First of all, welcome new Commissioners and congratulations, and welcome back returning Commissioners. I also attended the swearing-in this morning, and Mayor Ward, I appreciated your comments about focusing and your issues, and I hear your intention to create a public service, Public Safety Committee as part of your agenda in focusing. I also heard a number of people speak on something I think everyone in this room agrees on, and that's the importance of pedestrian safety and safe streets. And so in general, I think that getting rid of ad hoc committees in particular that have served their purpose is a good idea. I also think that having a committee on this topic, perhaps rolled into a look at all of the committee structure at your retreat is a good idea. But in particular, I think that Commissioner Chestnut mentioned something about public safety as well as other public works in the past having been involved. And I think that's an opportunity to think about the safety of streets, because I think that safe streets are at the intersection of following laws, which is what the police ask us to do and regulate, and the built environment. And so however you do it, I think that if the mission of the committee focuses on things that are important in this community and brings the right people to the table, you can really make your progress. And I think that progress in that area would be something every single person in this room would support. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would agree that a, certainly a Public Safety Committee would certainly have some, at least some purview into, to street safety. Okay, no more public comment on this item? Former Mayor Green, come on up. I am going to ask everybody for future topics. If you want to speak to the topic, please sign up, let us know.
Mr. Mayor, just a little ancient history. You fleshed out public safety. You fleshed out some discussion on public works. And the only other standing committees that were historically a part of the city's organization was Finance. I remember that because I was on the Finance Committee as a newly elected Commissioner. Parks and Recreation, and I believe the last one was Personnel. I heard, I know the City Commission has had some audit reports presented to it recently. That would be something appropriate for Finance Committee. And of course, there's always discussion about Parks and Recreation. You have some big initiatives being considered now. Those kind of issues to be fleshed out in that Standing Committee. And, and there's always something ongoing with Personnel, Human Relations as well. So those are the, those are the standing committees that generally get the job done.
Thank you. And just for, for information's sake, the, we do have a Standing Finance Committee and a Standing Audit Committee. For a long time, we, we had an Audit and Finance Committee, and we separated that so that we could talk more generally about finance and management issues and audit, to be specifically toward, toward the audit discussions. Not, not quite. You can go ahead and weigh in there, get in the system, I guess. Commissioner Willis.
So in keeping with the, the plan for Citizen Comment and then, you know, the Commission, I want to make sure I speak, this is my first time getting to speak. Thank y'all all. Please forgive me. The idea that we would have, you know, an increase of meetings over the course of a year, as was mentioned, because it sounds really haunting. I'm sorry, is it on? Okay. The idea that we would increase the number of meetings in such a short time, you know, terrifies me as someone who's still working a full-time job, trying to make all these meetings. But the idea of a Standing Committee for Public Safety when, between Police and Fire, is such a huge portion of our budget, a huge, huge portion of our budget, that it is important that some of those things have better and more normal conversation. So that's my comment I wanted to make.
Thank you. And I want to point out that what we're, what we're discussing is, is creating a, an ad hoc committee. It's a whole lot more, more process for us and multiple, multiple meetings to create a standing Public Safety Committee. Creating an ad hoc committee is, as kind of a trial balloon, is, let's see how it works, is a simple process today. If we wanted to do a standing Public Safety Committee, that requires us to change the rules, which is an ongoing process and would take a little while. But with that, Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've moved to establish us an ad hoc City Commission Committee on Public Safety comprised of public, police, and fire department issues.
And did you want to hold on to the other two committees, or do you want to make sunsetting them a part of?
And sunset the digital and.
Digital Access and Environmental Justice.
Environmental Justice, yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to sunset Environmental Justice and Digital Access Subcommittee's and to. and to create an ad hoc public safety committee focusing as much as possible on police and fire services. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep my comments a little brief. While I may not be as new as the newest commissioners, I am still relatively new here, and so it's particularly interesting and informative to me to hear those who have been a part of the processes here at the city speak to what it has been like previously with regards to the former standing committees. And I'm very interested in learning a little bit more about what a possible return to that might be. And so ideally, for me, that becomes a part of our conversation at the retreat, when we have that retreat. This, this is very, very important, how we become efficient, and how we address the issues within the city, and how we bring the community into those conversations is really critical. But I wanted to say this. One of the committees that Mayor Ward, you and I sat on, entered into this conversation and the idea of sunsetting it relatively recently, and that was the joint policy food and access board. And there were a lot of challenges, I think, that towards the end that particular committee faced. We all understand the need to have access to healthy food, and a lot of those conversations were wonderful, but we had staff that were sharing serious concerns with us about the amount of time that it was taking from them. And the fact that that board was not able to make decisions, and things always ended up coming back to one respective commission, be it the city commission or the county commission as well. So streamlining our processes and really making sure that we're honing in in a very meaningful way on the major issues is something that's really, really important to me. I'd like to see us go back to a conversation about this original committee structure. I was not here, but it certainly sounds like it may have been a good way of doing business previously, and I'd love to explore that conversation at the upcoming retreat.
And I'll get you in just a second, Commissioner Chestnut. So probably we want to, in terms of making the best use of that day, which is already pretty agenda-packed, would probably ought to consider that in context of a general policy discussion, because we have policy reports on it and lots of information. To give us plenty of opportunity to talk about it, probably is better suited to a general policy meeting. But that's just a thought. Commissioner Chestnut.
To the mayor pro tem's point, I think it might be instructive to invite former mayors prior to the dissolvement of the committee structure, because I think you would appreciate hearing that, and you'll learn a lot from it, because we operated, basically, I think it was five committees. And, but I think if we can get Mayor Green, Goldstein, whoever was in office prior to the dissolvement, I think that in a roundtable, I think you will learn a lot in hearing from them. Because I think it was very, I think it was very effective. Thank you.
And so we have a motion on the table. Any other commissioners with comments on that motion? Okay. The motion is to sunset the digital access and environmental justice subcommittees, and to create a public safety committee, an ad hoc public safety committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously.
Our next item is 2022-274, recruitment plan for charter officers, with the recommendation that the commission approve the recruitment plan for filling the five charter officer vacancies, and authorize the human resources department to engage the services of an executive search firm to initiate the search for each vacancy.
So, thank you, Madam Court. Prior to starting this, Ms. Gratz, if, I just wanted to put an idea out there. We, we can see in the backup for this that we're looking at about a $250,000 expense to do national searches for, at this point, four charter officers, or I don't know if the fifth is involved in this discussion, so it would be five. We have four charter officers who have been serving in interim positions for, three have been serving for more than a year in those interim positions, admirably, and we have one who's been serving for almost a year in that position, admirably. Before we get into committing to do a search for any or all of those positions, which is entirely the prerogative of the commission, if there is a will and an interest for someone to make a motion that we will move the interim and make permanent any of those, this might be a good opportunity to have that discussion. And if not, that's okay, too, we can go through the process. But if there is someone who wants to do that, I'd rather make sure that when we talk about the recruitment plan, we are talking about the recruitment plan. So, is there any appetite for bringing on any of our charters permanently as a motion right now? Mr. Sacco.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll agree with you. A lot of our charters have served for more than a year at this point, and they've, they've served very well. They've shown their knowledge base and their skill set. There is one, I welcome conversation on keeping the others permanently, not just because of the fiscal impact to the city, but because they're good at their jobs. But there is one that I think it should go without too much argument, that Mr. Cunningham be kept as permanent general manager of GRU, given his skill set. GRU is a very unique creature, I've come to find out, both, on both sides of the dais. Mr. Cunningham with his, I think it's over 20 years of experience at this point, over 20 years of experience, knows from, you know, entry to where he is now, the different, the different places we have been and the places we want to go with GRU. He knows our plan for the next five years to commit to it. He helped shepherd that through, through really tough times, and is still doing it admirably. And I think to do an outside search, a national search, or even an internal search, I don't think we'll get anyone who will understand Gainesville and GRU the way Mr. Cunningham does right now. I don't want to throw someone to the sharks in the middle of a budget as we prep one. I don't want someone who won't understand the culture of GRU and Gainesville. And all that aside, Mr. Cunningham's just great, in my opinion.
I'm beginning to disagree with that.
I think, I think we have seven, he's great, it's not more. So I would move that we, at the very least, and I welcome amendments to it, but I would move that we make Mr. Cunningham the permanent general manager for GRU.
Is there a second to a motion to make Mr. Cunningham the permanent general manager? Okay, that motion dies for, for a second. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been really struggling with this. I have, you've mentioned this on the campaign trail, so I assume this is kind of how this conversation was gonna go. I, on one hand, have gotten to know many of our charter officers. I have, was lucky enough to have won my election before a runoff, so I've had about three and a half months where I've been able to go around and do walkthroughs with Tony Cunningham, Cynthia Curry, really get to see our city. And our charter officers are very, very good at their jobs. I have been, on the other side of the dais, as an activist, watching the city from the outside in, and have seen it when our charter officers are not getting along as well, when there are some who are better than others. We have a really, really great team here, we are uniquely in a good place. At the same time, this is the biggest issue that we're, the biggest decision we are going to make as a commission. Who we put into these positions, I'd argue, is significantly more important than any one of us being up here on this dais. And I want to ensure that for us coming in, that we're putting a good message out to the community, that this is a new commission with a new way that we're going about doing things, that we are going to be listening to the community, that we're going to be making decisions that are deliberative and thoughtful. But I don't necessarily want to spend $250,000 just to make sure that, that we end up appointing the same people we had before. So I had proposed, I have a proposal counter to that, that would bring this back to us at the February 16th meeting, where each of the charter officers would be, of the interims would be voted on to either keep or to go back out for re-advertising, which would give me and at least the two other new city commissioners time to interview them, talk with them if the other sitting city commissioners would also like to do so. I think that would be, you know, they'd be open for interviews. Have the public meeting, that is part of the presentation that we are going to be having. And that would allow us some time to get to, talk to the charter officers, ask them questions, and I think it's good for our charters to have each one of their commissioners give them a seal of approval to say, this is who we want, this is who we don't want, to really be interacting with that. And I think as a new city commissioner, I would really like to have that opportunity to interview them and sit down with them one-on-one.
So what date were you suggesting they come out?
The, I, February 16th, you could do it earlier in February. I wanted to make sure, I, the other two commissioners work full-time jobs, and so I wanted to give them some more time than what I would have had. So a month and a half, I think, is enough time for you guys to be able to sit down with each one of the charters and then come back to that with motions on each one of them.
Okay, and is that a motion or just a discussion?
I'm just gonna throw it out there, you know, as a discussion item.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think all of our charters have done an excellent job, and I think that the public will see that when they see the evaluations. $250,000 to do a search for charter officers, I think will be dollars well spent. They'll be well spent because I want to hear the new ideas. Everyone knows that lowering GRU rates for poor people is my top issue. I want to hear what other people out in the country have to say about that, what they've done in their communities to lower those rates, because that is near and dear to my heart. I want to hear the new ideas. Maybe all the new ideas are already here in Gainesville, fine. Then that will just reaffirm. But I think we owe it to the public to engage in a thorough search for charter officers. We don't want a situation where we end up, again, with people leaving and all of these vacancies. But I think that this will be a commitment for the public, and we'll have an opportunity to truly evaluate the people we have. But I think we need to go out, go out with the full search. I will say one thing, I just hope that the, that the recruitment company we choose is not the one that recruited the previous permanent commis-, uh, city manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, Commissioner Willis.
Thank you. As one of the new commissioners who has had far less time officially as an elect, to be able to meet with all the charter officers, I have the same concern that postponing this till even February gives, at least me, much more time to directly communicate, also to hear from employees, because that should be part of the process, public as well. But particularly employees, because they're the ones who are managed by our charter officers. As Commissioner Eastman said, those are probably the most important thing that I, I believe are the most important thing I will do, because that is, one of the very few things that have very direct impact on who works for the city is right then and there with our charter officers. Some of our charter officers, I suspect they are the best that we will find. I highly suspect that. I suspect some of them have done well, and they will continue to do well, and reports from community and from our staff, our community builders, will back that up. But I also know that some of these are big, huge, huge positions, general manager. It's a huge position with the majority of our staff, the city manager. And then the general manager of GRU, of course, also huge, huge, huge enterprise. And despite as much good service as we have, those ideas of what the future looks like for GRU, because we are talking about 10 and 20 and 30-year plans, some of those plans are not 10 and 20 and 30 years in the past. They're 10 and 20 and 30 years into the future. I appreciate the idea of being able to look more closely at all the charter officers, have a little more time. I will also say, I'm not much of a fan of, that's too important, leave it to the next commission. I've heard that often. There was a Supreme Court justice that was argued like that. Leave it to the next Congress. I don't believe in that, because I believe the voters of the city voted probably correctly when they voted. Any business that comes up could be dealt with then. So this is a long time for interims to have served. If the previous commission would have decided that they were ready, that they should be permanent, they could have done that, but knowing that they did not, I support the idea of at least giving us some time to make a decision, possibly in February, February 16th, so that we have a good grasp on it, and we can make those decisions then.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have vacillated and gone back and forth over this particular issue, and I certainly can understand and respect the need for new commissioners to have time to be able to figure out who you're working with. I did want to offer a little something more, because I appreciate the time, the energy, the work that the current charters, who are all in interim positions, have given us. It has been absolutely outstanding. You have worked through some incredibly tumultuous times with us, and that is certainly not lost on me. From a very personal perspective, as the District One Commissioner, I will say this. For me, it is incredibly important to make sure that, and I'm just gonna use this position as the example here, that whoever our city manager is, is an individual who does not just use the word equity as a buzz or catchphrase. Someone that will step into the position and not play favorites. And I guess what I'm getting at is, we had had previous discussions from the dais about potentially creating a set of standards, if you will, that would kind of govern how we made certain selections. You get to choose whoever you want, absolutely, but there'd be some kind of guideposts. Do you, does anyone up here kind of remember that? Okay? That, to me, is very, very important. I can personally say, to Commissioner Chestnut's point, I kind of smiled when you made your statement there. Because my experience now with the current city manager is completely different from my experience was with the previous one. District One now, and this is once again my personal experience and District One's experience, operates from a completely different purview and has gotten a different type of attention. And so my needs and the things that my constituents in District One require, being the district that has the most deficits and disparities, is something that is critical. So while I want to make sure that my new colleagues have an opportunity to get what it is that you need, I feel the need to say that. Because what I heard in each one of your conversations today, in your speeches today, was the desire to move towards actualizing that equity. If we've seen where that is already in progress and in play, for me personally, that's critical. It's absolutely critical. You're talking about generational impact down the line. And I just can't say it enough, I greatly appreciate all of the work that everybody has done. You guys have been absolutely outstanding. This, this isn't, this isn't easy. I thought about how we have been viewed in the last year or so as a city. I thought about what other folks who might consider working here might say. I thought about what words might be used to characterize us as municipal government. And unstable was one of those words. I've heard it. And as we move through this process, I'm just hoping that we can do so in a way that is fair and just and objective, and one that definitely takes a look at where we are and where we're going. I'll conclude there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm still processing all the comments from my colleagues on the dais. And Commissioner Willis basically spoke about the enviable position that we've been put in with a big and very significant decision, and I thought it might be appropriate, we have the HR director, perhaps we could hear that presentation. That's another piece of processing all the information there.
Okay, no further comments at this point, doesn't look like. Thank you for standing there and listening intently to us, I appreciate you. Let's go ahead with your presentation.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners, and welcome new commissioners to the city of Gainesville and all the fun that we have here. So my name is Laura Gratz, I am the HR director here. I'm here today to do a follow-up presentation on a charter officer recruitment plan. We started having these discussions back in late 2021. Let me make sure I've got the right button here. Let me make sure I've got the right button here. So just to get you up to date, by mid-January, so the middle of this month, we currently have four charter officers that are serving in an interim role, as has been mentioned. I have the tenure for each of those positions on the slide for you to see. Our current city auditor has submitted her resignation, and Brackett Anderson will be serving as an interim city auditor beginning January 16th. So that will be a vacancy that we've added to this recruitment plan since we last talked. When we did last talk, we brought forward a recruitment plan to pretty much cover the timeline and the steps that were involved, but we were asked by the commission at the time to also bring back recommendations for the actual recruiting firms and which firms we would use to recruit for each specific charter officer. So I'll be talking about that in just a moment. So for, especially for our newer Commissioners, so you have a greater understanding about this. So if we move forward with this, each recruitment plan we do for each of the charter officer positions would include the steps that you see on the slide here. So our first step would be to talk with you all as a commission, to make sure that you're fine with the job descriptions, what are the qualities you want to see in the charter officers, you know, the ideal, this is your ideal, what you would like to see in those different roles. We then would work with the executive search firm to create an advertisement, which would typically be run for thirty days, so for a month, and they, of course, have tickler files of the different types of folks that they think might be a good fit, and will certainly do the recruitment process as well on an active basis. Once the commission has selected top candidates, there's a series of steps that we'll go through together as a group. So the interview process typically in the past has included one-on-one sit-downs, which is each of the candidates and each Commissioner. We also do a joint interview with the city commission as a whole and each candidate, and we make sure that there is a public reception that is made available for members of the public to attend, so that they can get to know each of the candidates as well. So we would do this for each of the vacancies that we would fill. As I mentioned the last time we spoke, we have a number of firms that we have on retainer, executive search firms, I have them listed here on the slide. The executive search firm, Commissioner Chestnut, that you were referring to is not part of this list, just to assure you of that. I've provided recommendations on this slide for which firm would, I think, be the best fit to help us recruit for the specific charter officer position. These decisions were made based on the firm's experience recruiting for that particular office. There are a couple of firms that are on retainer. One was CPS HR Consulting, and while they looked like they had fine credentials, they've not done a lot of work in the state of Florida, and I think that's an important piece of experience for that executive search firm to have. So we decided not to include those as one of the options. MGT Consulting Group, again, was another one that we thought looked like could be a good match and a good help, but we've had trouble connecting with them, and if we're gonna have trouble connecting before we start to recruit, I did not want to go there. So the recommendations are there for you to review. I will mention Baker Tilly, that is a larger organization than Gov HR USA. One of the reasons I selected them for the city manager and general manager of the utility position, specifically the general manager of the utility, is they have extensive utility experience in placing utility executives, so I wanted to make sure that we had a match with that. Gov HR USA, we have used before, they've been very responsive, they actually placed our current city auditor with us. Any questions about this? Okay. Okay, so recruitment timeline, I know this is really small, so I'll try to walk you through it. So when we last met, I had suggested, because of the lift that it requires on the HR team, quite frankly, the clerks team, et cetera, and you all, for the amount of information you'll have to go through, our recommendation is that these get advertised on a staggered basis, but there will be some form of ongoing recruitment from the day you decide go until approximately, right now, mid-September. The recommendation is to, and this was based on previous conversations with the commission, is we focus on recruiting the city manager and general manager of the utility first, because those are the largest charters that oversee the largest amount of employees and operations, and then we look to the Office of Equity and Inclusion, the City Attorney, and then the City Auditor. And so you can see, the other thing that we were asked to do at the last presentation to the commission was, try to find ways to condense this timeline. So one way we looked to do that was to have you look at all the job descriptions for all the charter officers now, so we can get those finalized and ready to go, and get them to the executive search firm so they can prepare advertising materials. So we'll save a bit of time there, but you can see accordingly kind of how that stretches out. So each timeline for each vacancy lasts approximately fifteen weeks, again, depends on holiday schedules, et cetera, scheduling, just scheduling in general on the calendar. Questions about this? Okay, and then the final recommendation, if you decide to move forward in this way, I just broke out the dates a little bit more clearly for you, so you could get an idea of what the timeframe would look like. So we would gather, if we do that, we can gather the final job descriptions and qualities that you'd like to see in each of the charter officers during the month of January, and then launch into the advertisement for the city manager first, and then sequentially go after that. And that is it.
Okay, thank you, and I'm assuming that we're gonna go now into something that looks like motions, are there questions about this? Okay, all right. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a reason? So I know theoretically why we want to stagger, because it's a lot to do at the same time. That said, the general manager and the city manager have the bulk of the budget to figure out, and I know that they are already working on it, they've been working on it since October 1st. That said, I would wonder if, at least for those two, it'd be possible to run them concurrently, given that, I think if we have twenty-two-hundred employees, they have over two thousand of those? And I'd like to see, in relatively, relatively shared and relative time, how the candidates would be compatible with each other, if that is the route we go, and not a month after having those conversations, so we could decide relatively at the same time, those two positions. And I think, when it comes to stability for our budget, for our employees, it really comes down to those two positions have to mesh well. So in your opinion, would it be possible to do, I know those are the two big ones, but to have them done together, and that way, at least by May, we're done with that portion to finalize the budget?
So I think you bring up an excellent option, and I think it is doable. It's certainly, as you said, it would give you the advantage to kind of see how the different candidates mesh together at the same time rather than spread out. Because Baker Tilly is a larger search firm, I think that they would have the bandwidth to be able to support both at the same time. I'd like to give the caveat that we'd certainly want to check with them first, but I don't think that that would be an issue. So I think that would be a plausible option.
From our side. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And that's Commissioner Buck.
Yes, sir. This is just a very brief question, I think I actually know the answer, I just want to confirm. We're already budgeted in fiscal year 2023, some amount of money should the body decide to go, and then obviously anything that pushed into fiscal year 2024 is something that's gonna occur across the budget process, is that accurate?
That's correct. So we actually allocated two hundred thousand dollars at the time to roll over into the fiscal year 23 budget to account for this. At the time when we made that decision, we weren't aware that the city auditor position would be vacant. So it's about fifty thousand dollars. And again, those numbers are estimate, I would prefer to go a little bit higher and make sure we come in lower. So yes, that's the additional, but that would be able to be covered in that budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck, Mr. Willetts.
If we delayed the decision until February 16th, would this timeline be possible shifted until then, or anything moved up? And part of that's a question about the capacity, it sounds like the larger firm, possible capacity, but then the Gov HR.
So Commissioner, thank you for the question. So it may adjust that timeline maybe by a month. We still, regardless, even if we, in my opinion, if you still decide to make a final decision about whether or not to recruit in February, we still can start the legwork in HR with you all to provide you with the job descriptions, make sure that we understand your desires for what that looks like and have those finalized. So when that meeting comes in February, if that's the path that you choose, we'll be ready to hit the ground running with that. So it may delay it some, but I think not by more than a month, I would imagine.
All right, if there are no other questions at this point, then I'd like to hear from the public, and then we'll come back for a motion.
Joe Beatty, followed by Tana Silva.
Good afternoon, once again, Joe Beatty. Fifteen years I've been through a lot of searches, and I've seen how it happens, and I appreciate the presentation by HR. And the one thing that has always bothered me, and I think I've mentioned it to previous Commissioners, I'll mention it again, hoping that maybe the majority of you might see some value in what I'm going to suggest. And what's been bothersome over all these years is the fact that Commissioners have historically had one-on-ones with the search committee. Each of you individually, out of the public eye, and without benefit for each of you to hear the others' questions, the search committee meets, and you say what you're looking for in a particular position. It's my position that all your decisions are really not individual decisions, they're decisions of the commission. So you're not privy to other Commissioners' leanings in that. People can count votes, they can see, you know, maybe the search committee was told, "We want people with blue eyes." Four of you told them that, and the rest didn't say anything about the eye color. So, you know, it's gonna skew who they're looking for. And I think, I think that's really, I don't think that's a good process. I think that you all should sit up here, it's a commission decision, it's not what each of you wants. You will not all be here for the tenure of the person that you select, and the transparency really says, you should be doing it in front of us, so that we might give you input too. The other message I think that gives is that these, like, one-on-ones and behind-the-scenes communications, okay. And I really worry about transparency. Transparency for when that person comes in, you know. And the same thing when you get down to your final candidates, you have one-on-ones, and I really think all that should be done. Commissioner Duncan Walker may ask a question that never even occurred to Commissioner Buck or any of the rest of you. And there's real important things. If you go back and look, one of the decisions, Commissioner Donovan, they tried to, it was not a hiring, but they wanted to take him offline, "Oh, they'll come in, they'll speak to you in your office." And he said, "I want everybody out there to hear the questions I ask, I want my colleagues, and I want to hear what they say." I think that's, that's really, really important, and I think, you know, it's time you move on with it, and thank you for listening and your attention.
Thank you.
Tana Silva, followed by Evelyn Fox, I think she's gone.
Thank you. I really appreciate Commissioner Chestnut's proposal and her reasoning about the importance of going through a real process. It's nothing personal, I'm sure all the charters have been doing a great job, and it's so important after this period of year after year of tumult and turmoil and all of that, for not only the commission but all of the city, to get a thorough process, a serious, serious process for putting these most important employees of the city in place. And I agree with Joe Beatty, I think one-on-one is not really serving the purpose, and I also wonder if staff has an avenue to weigh in on the different candidates, because they're the ones who are on the front lines doing the work with the various charters, and that might be an idea. But I think it's absolutely vital, and this was supposed to happen, you know, this was projected to begin the process before the previous commission left, and to bring the newly-elected people in for some, you know, to be in on the selection process and the way that it's gonna be done, but that didn't happen, I guess other things took priority. And I would say, don't delay it another month. I mean, why? Why would you? You're gonna have, you know, the time that you're doing the work that you're doing now until February anyway, and you can talk with the charters all you want to, the interim charters. And in the meantime, I think staff would be doing everyone a service by going ahead with the recruitment process, with setting up the criteria for the positions and all of that. So I hope you'll take to heart Commissioner Chestnut's recommendation, and just go ahead now, start the process, and stagger it throughout the months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, is that, that all on this one, or did you have a comment on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just come on up, yeah, let's, but I'm gonna tell everybody, next meeting, fill it out before we start the item.
Well, I didn't intend to speak, this is Monica Frazier, but this is a response to Commissioner Sacco's comments about trying to pair two candidates together during the selection process to make sure that they mesh well. To me, that doesn't quite sit well, it doesn't make sense, because you wanna have one person set, and then bring in the second one to interview for the meshing, to make sure that they work well together or that they have a common relationship-building foundation or whatever. But if you don't, if you start with two, and they're both possibles, because nobody's hired yet, you might make an offer, and that offer might get rejected. They might get a better offer somewhere else, or just after speaking with you might just decide, "Hey, I don't really want to come work with these people." And so trying to pair in the recruitment, I think, is the wrong thing when you only have two possibles. You need to have one person set, and then bring in somebody to join the team. You can't, you can't do that well in a national recruitment setting. And so that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all right. The light says wait in first.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion that I made previously, I don't know how the rest of the Commission will feel, but I will restate it. To give our new commission a chance to interview each interim charter officer, include the public reception that was included in the proposal, so that the community can meet each interim charter, and then return on the February 16th agenda with a vote on whether to make permanent or re-advertise each role.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion in a second to move this forward to the February 16th meeting, and include between now and then a public reception where the public can meet the interim.
Well, and importantly, that each charter officer will be individually voted on by this commission on whether to retain or re-advertise.
Just hadn't finished.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
So, but the public reception is an important part of what you're saying, correct?
Yes, I want, I want to show the community that we want to hear what they have to say, that I want them to meet these important charter officers, that is part of the original recruitment process, and so I wanted that to be a part of it.
And are you asking for five separate receptions or a reception?
I don't, I don't feel strongly either way, but one reception would certainly be less work on staff, so I would be fine with one reception.
Okay, and, all right, and we have a second on that one. Commissioner Chestnut, did you want to make a comment?
I'll just wait to vote on this, because I was gonna make a motion to move forward.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
I just have a point of clarity. With regards to what Commissioner Eastman has said, I vaguely remember that we had done it like that before, I just am trying to figure out, historically, have we had a reception? I remember a reception for the last.
The receptions ended up being, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, 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 that's fine.
The receptions were traditionally, when we brought in the last set of candidates for a particular position. So if we had three finalists, then we would have a reception for the three finalists for the community to come and get to know each one.
Got you. Commissioner Eastman is proposing that we do this on the front end.
I am proposing as though we are at a place now where, imagine that we're taking out the whole search process, right? And we are now at the place where we have a final set of applicants, right? We're doing the exact same thing as we would as though these were the final set of applicants and then we are interviewing them in that same way, we are doing the public reception. I did not include the joint interview with the city commission, which was in that one. I can add that in if we think it's important, but it seemed like I I'm trying to be cognizant of the time of some of our newer commissioners as they're coming in and the time of our staff as well. But I'm happy to put that in there. And then that would essentially be putting us at that point as though these were the final applicants coming in, if that helps explain it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chestnut.
To that point, I think the school board has a very good process. And it goes to what Ms. Beatty is saying. The school board invites the candidate in and all five school board members interview, ask that person questions in front of the public. And so it's not a one-on-one in your office. And I think that that is very important to include in any process that we take.
So we have traditionally included that as well as one-on-ones?
Okay, all right, I didn't know that part.
All right, Commissioner Book.
So to the motion, I think that probably one of the critical aspects of the advantages and disadvantages that we weigh is while we might like, Commissioner Willet says, "Have the best and the brightest sitting right here with us and doing it," we don't have the capability to expand that and look and see what might be out there. The big disadvantage I see by not moving forward with the process is that we're not role modeling what we're going to want every other search process in this city to occur. And that's a problem for us. So if we at the city commission follow our own process and procedure, I know I said I was going to use those terms interchangeably, then we run the risk of hearing from other areas of city government and the utilities that says, "You're not acting that way at the level of the elected officials, why should we have to go through our processes and follow those rules and protocol?" And something that kind of pains me just is the human element, is I actually did go through, Commissioner Eastman said he got to go through the orientation and the onboarding, and I did go through that over the winter holidays, just because the college was closed, Commissioner Willet's. And I can tell you that the five, six days of onboarding and tours and stuff was impressive from a city perspective. And I know some people may think, "Well, you maybe just got the grand tour." The reality was is I was able to ask questions and interact with the manager at the other end of the table and I was impressed. That's the disadvantages, we put them at risk. I kind of come back to something that maybe Commissioner Chestnut may have been alluding to, which is, we have to follow our own rules or it's going to be difficult for us to hold others accountable to those rules. Even though we probably have some of the ones who are going to make it through the process. I look forward to voting on the motion, but I don't think that one month is going to make a difference. And I think splitting hairs amongst which charters we hire or don't hire on that day could actually cause collateral impacts.
So any other comments about this motion? Okay, so I would I hear what you're saying. Keep in mind that these are charter officers, they're not, they're not the same as the rest of the other 2,200 employees. Very specifically not. They are, the process that we use for them is going to be and has been different than what's laid out through collective bargaining for other folks or through our other HR processes. They're not hired the same way, much as we're not hired the same way. That's important to note, Ms. Gretz, one quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about 15 weeks per candidate in 15 separate, or excuse me, five different 15-week segments, accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so my math brings that out to 75 weeks.
So they're, they'll overlap, I'm sorry, they'll overlap.
So they're not?
Correct, sorry.
All right. If we, keep me on task, if we started a search now and we think it's going to be 15 weeks, we're essentially looking at making an offer to the first one, the first process late March.
So.
No, late April, I'm sorry.
Yes, so I've included a bit of cushion. So I am guesstimating right now around May 4th. And the reason is, while you all will start to look at job descriptions and once we get the go-ahead from the commission to execute agreements with the search firms, it takes a bit of back and forth between legal offices, et cetera. The good news is, is they're on retainer, so it eliminates some of that time. So there's a, you know, there's a, like a jumping off point, it takes us a couple of weeks to get the engines revved up, if you will.
And what was your recommendation on the first search?
So first search was city manager. And we would, while we would get all the job descriptions of the charters, we would actually launch that the end of January and then look to have and be ready to make an offer to a selected candidate at the beginning of May.
So, that being the case, that's the smack in the middle of budget season. I'm going to tell you, I don't think that's a good way to move forward, to bring in a brand-new manager in May or June or July. That's my vote, only mine. But keep that timeline in mind, that creates issues. The manager's team could potentially be working for an entirely different person by the end of the process. Also, that's budget season for every potential candidate. That is something to keep in mind as we make a decision, because we can choose to do a different timeline to prioritize different positions other than the city manager or the general manager first. But that's a real important thing to keep in mind. Changing horses in the last third of the budget season could be problematic, I don't know. Okay, so next up is Commissioner Chestnut.
So to follow up on that point, so is your thinking that we bring the person in in October at the beginning of the fiscal?
I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I, I think a seasoned manager can come in at any point and pick up the budget process. But I would have some problems in delaying it any further than May. You may be able to make an offer before May, but I think to move it any further down past August, June, July, August, is really problematic. Just my thought.
Commissioner Sacco. Could we be careful with our phones and cut those off? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I hear what you're saying. It's one of the concerns I had where, you know, I'd rather have them sooner for that reason, because both of them would be really putting together giant budgets. And I hadn't thought of the process that most candidates would also be handling their own budgets. And people can multitask, but there's a human limit. And there's a limit to us as well in that period as we try to set budget meetings and try to interview dozens of candidates by the end of it, if we have five charters. I am not opposed, because if you actually look at the chart in the backup, the timeline, we don't, the firm would not do any active recruiting until the fourth or fifth week, I believe, Ms. Gretz. Back up, like, we do all the backend stuff, but nobody would be contacted or reached out until about week four or five.
Ads wouldn't go out theoretically until, yes, week four or five, correct.
So, in theory, if your concern is not doing this at the height of budget, I'm not opposed to beginning the search for those two. What would that be like, August, September, just to get it at the tail end? So that, you know, people are on downtime in October for a few weeks until it all starts again? I'm not opposed to that. My concern is, those are the two pillars of the city. So I would need those two positions filled before I look at anyone else. So that kind of leaves us between a rock and a hard place of, do we keep waiting? Do we accept some of the folks that we already have who are wonderful and delay the search further for another eight months at that point? So folks get to work with the charters we have now, our new commissioners get to work with the charters we have and see firsthand up, you can, you know, you can come into the job, and I'm speaking from my own experience, you can come into the job with preconceived notions of how the utility should be run. And then seeing one issue after another in practice and how it's handled can give you a different perspective on the charter themselves. Same with the day-to-day management of the city, it gives you a different perspective than, you know, a one-hour conversation a week you've been in office. And I, like, as a foundation, I don't want to wait any longer, I want this settled, but I, because I heard what the new commissioners were saying of wanting to get to know our charters, and I agree, you should get to know them, they're great, they have great talent. I don't think you're going to get that out of one conversation or two, or one or two tours. Although when I was taken to the top of Deer Haven Renewable, I thought that just about made me not like anyone, because it's very tall. But if it came down to that choice of, "I don't want to look for someone while their hair's on fire trying to finalize a budget in their own city that they're already at and waiting to start in August," I'm okay, I prefer that, I prefer starting later, I prefer starting in eight months so that our new commissioners get to actually see how our charters work here, one-on-one, because it's very different on this side. We can still probably do a lot of the tail-end stuff with HR, the front-end, front-end stuff of, this is what I'd like ideally. We can keep modifying that, but we need managers before we need the other charters. Or at least in my opinion, like, those have to be settled as the bulk of our employees. And I don't I want us to have a good search experience and I want our candidates to be at a place where they can fully concentrate on this, or at least majority concentrate on this, because they'll still be working, rather than probably putting together budgets of their own. Currently, I'm not going to vote for the motion currently forward. I think I'd prefer to wait until August to start the search in full, thank you.
So, no other lights, the motion on the table is to to make an opportunity for everyone to talk to the existing interim charters between now and February 16th and at the February 16th meeting, or prior to that meeting, to have a public reception for the public to make sure they've had an opportunity to meet the interim charter officers and then to make a decision to either hire them permanently on February 16th or begin a search, a definite search process at that point. Does that accurately state your motion?
That's correct.
All in favor? We've already, you have already weighed in on the process, on the idea, and now we're going to move forward with the motion as we discussed earlier. Ms. Beatty, this is what we're going to do. All in favor? Ms. Beatty, if you do another outburst, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. There is an orderly operation of a meeting. I tried to express that early in the meeting. We're not going to have shouts, shout-outs and back-and-forths, which is not. This is the people's business and we're not going to pretend as if it's not, we're not going to have a free-for-all. Ms. Beatty? All in favor? Aye. All right, all opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion fails with Willetts, Ward and Eastman for, and then the others in opposition. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city commission approve the recruitment plan fulfilling the five charter officer vacancies and two authorize the human resources department to engage the services of an executive search firm, firms, to initiate the search for each charter officer vacancy.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to follow the recommendations as put forth on the agenda. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? So that motion passes, six to one with Sacco in dissent. We are going to take a five-minute recess and we will be back, a little over five minutes, we'll be back at 3:10. Let's start making our way back to our seats. All right. We're done stretching our legs. Let's get back to our seats. Nice. Okay. We are back. We're going to be back in session here. And Madam Clerk, what's up next?
We have Ms. Jo Beatty.
For?
Her comment.
For what?
For...
We, we need to read the next item in. We're, we've moved on to that item.
The next item is item number 2022-767 Charter Officers' Annual Performance Evaluations and Pay Increases, with the recommendation that the commission, the City Commission review the performance of each charter officer and establish appropriate performance ratings and consider pay increases for FY 2022.
Thank you. Ms. Gretz, you're going to present once again?
Hello again, Mayor Commissioners.
I'm not going to preempt you this time.
Okay. So, good afternoon again. Happy to see you all. Feels like deja vu. So I'm here this afternoon to talk with you all about charter officer performance evaluations. So for our new commissioners, you did not have to go through this process. You'll get to do this at the end of this coming fiscal year, and I'll walk you through it. But our previous commission and those who still remain with us went through a process of reviewing the performance of each of our charter officers. Each charter officer provided a summary of their accomplishments for fiscal year '22 to each of the commissioners to review and had one-on-one meetings with the commissioners. And the commissioners had an opportunity to rate each charter officer on their performance. I had provided a tally sheet in the agenda, and I apologize, we had to make a last-minute adjustment to a calculation. There was a typographical error, so I have revised copies here. So I'll bring them up to the clerk so you all can look at it, and then we'll walk through it. And if I could use the overhead, please, that would be helpful.
That's a great shot.
I'm horrible when it comes to stuff. This is why I'm not an engineer. Okay. So I apologize, the font is super small. So to help members of the audience and the new commissioners understand, each of the charter officers are rated on how they support the city's goals overall, and then there are five competencies that they are ranked on as well. We got the information from the different commissioners and included those tally sheets, tallies here for the scores to come up with an overall score for each of the charters. In Ms. Bigby's case, our city auditor, because she has submitted her resignation, we did not receive a, a full course of performance evaluations on her because she'll be departing before merit increases would be awarded. But you can see the performance evaluations that she received, she received the highest score that you can achieve, which is a five outstanding performance on those. For Mr. Cunningham, our general manager of the utility, you can see his overall score was a 4.97, so just shy of the five. Again, an outstanding ranking. For Ms. Curry, our city manager, she is at a 4.87 for an overall score. And Mr. Falston, who is our Director of the Office of Equity and Inclusion, had an overall score of 4.77. And Ms. Gany, who is our city clerk, an overall score of 4.17. And Mr. Nie, our city attorney, overall score of 4.54. And that's an average of all the rankings that they received on the different elements of the performance evaluation. Now, in the agenda item, I feel like I got really loud. In the agenda item, we have budgeted for two and a half percent increases for the charter officers. That mirrors what's being provided in the budget for our MAPS employees, and it's about just shy of $31,000. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the dais? Yes. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions as much as I simply wanted to make a comment. I did go through the evaluation process and spoke with each individual charter. Due to some personal things as well as some technical things, you do not see my numbers here, but they will be presented to the clerk. She and I have had conversations about when they will be submitted. I just wanted to make sure that I did enter that information into the record so that the public knew that I was not derelict in my duty. But I, I took it very, very seriously that having conversations with these charters, and particularly given where we are now, moving towards the, the interview process and what we've just said that we're going to do, it, it is going to be really, really important that I, I, we have, I think, a full understanding of where everybody has fallen. So I just wanted to ensure everyone that my numbers will be in, no later than tomorrow, they will, they will be able to be displayed, I believe, and ready for the public. Okay? That is not going to, and this is a question, impact their ability to get their raises, correct? And I did ask only that a little earlier. She told me no.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Did I understand you to say that because the auditor will be exiting, she will not be included in the?
She, so she won't be eligible for an increase. Those increases are paid in the, the first full paycheck of January, and that will be after she's departed the city.
I see.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. So thank you, Ms. Gretz. We're going to go out to the public for, for comment. Has anyone signed up for this item?
Ms. Jo Beatty?
And anybody else while Ms. Beatty makes her way back?
No one else?
Okay. Okay, Ms. Beatty does not. Okay. All right. Back to the commission. Do we have a motion or any discussion on this? Commissioner Chestnut.
That the charter officers, I think each charter officer would be, would be eligible, where is she? For two point, a 2.5% increase? Is that what we?
Mayor Commissioners, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Then a move that we accept the information provided by Human Resources and move that we allocate salary increases of 2.5% to charter officers as budgeted. Second.
All right. So we have a motion in a second to apply a 2.5% increase to the, to five charter officers other than the?
The auditor.
The auditor. And by the way, our, our new interim auditor just had her, her contract approved by us at the last meeting, I believe. So that sets a baseline for that. All right. Any other questions? Any questions? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. And I did want to point out before we move on, the, for the, the retaining charter officers, folks who are still here, well above four points for, out of five for each of them, and they are to be congratulated on, on amazing service, including 4.97 and 4.87 for our two managers. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
The next item is 2023-11 Update on Winter Energy Usage and Billing and Staffing, with the recommendation that the commission hear a presentation from staff.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, so in December, we had a couple discussions about various topics with GRU particularly, and bills for our customers. We had some discussion about that with the request to bring back a more detailed discussion of those items. And so we have a number of folks that are going to present today. I'm just going to introduce them all, and then they're going to kind of rotate through. Beginning will be our Chief Sustainability Officer, which is Eric Walters. He will then, he will talk about generation planning and things that we do to keep costs down for customers all year round, but in particularly during peak times in the, in the wintertime. We will also have our Chief Customer Officer talk about what we do directly with the customer and how we assist customers, or how they can reach out to customer service if they have questions. We will then have our Communications Director, Dave Worm, talk about how we're communicating information to people and where they can get information. And then Kenzon will come back up to also talk about some of the billing challenges that we talked about in December, so staffing, resources, and, and billing issues. And the HR Director, Laura Gretz, is still here, and she'll have some additional information regarding the recruitment, retention of meter readers as part of that challenge. The last thing I'd like to say is we also have, I know I'm introducing a lot of people, Tony Carroll, who is our Energy Delivery Officer, and Chad Parker, they will be here to talk more specifically about questions related to our meter readers and, and that, those issues. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric and let him get into more detail.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, as the general manager said, my name is Eric Walters. The Chief Sustainability Officer for GRU. We're going to walk through, at least initially, what we go through for generation planning. But I really want to kick this off by, by talking about energy costs and what goes into energy cost. You'll see kind of a three, three areas or three dots along the side here that factor into what the final cost that the customer plays, pays for their energy. The first is generation. The second is customer assistance, and the third is the communication or the public education part of that. And so as the general manager mentioned, what, two of my colleagues are going to be coming up after me to discuss the two, the middle and lower on the side here. But I want to talk about generation and generation planning. These seem like three dots on the side, but these are really almost three entire departments within GRU. And what that translates to is a lot of people working at, looking at this a lot of the time, most of the day, around the clock in some cases, trying to make sure that our energy costs are as low as possible, that's delivered to our customer. And so when we look at the usage patterns for our customers, this chart shows the average residential use for customers throughout every month of the year. And you will see some variability throughout this chart. You will notice that for January, there is a, a mini peak, I'll call it. There's elevated use in January, but it is still lower than the actual yearly peak, which occurs normally one of those months during the summer. And obviously, a lot of that is cooling load due to the, the heat and humidity here. But during January, you do see a spike in prices. That correlates with the most volatile time that we have as far as weather as well. You typically see more spikes in natural gas and fuel prices during January for that same reason. You have a lot of heating load that happens up north that also affects the prices that we pay here. And so you do see more use, you see more weather variability during that month, and then you will also see an elevated use in energy as a, as a end result of that. Now, when you look at energy cost, you can ignore the fuel costs that go into it. It is a large part of the actual energy cost that a customer pays. This chart simply shows the natural gas spot price beginning in 1998 through the most recent months in 2022. And as you can see, that is not a straight line. There's a lot of variability that goes into that. Some of that is weather, some of that is supply chain, some of that is just uncertainty that's been priced into the market. But either way that happens, you do see these spikes that happen every now and again. Okay? As noted here in the chart, the peak for 2022 was actually $8.81 per therm. Okay? So that's come down quite significantly since then, but still nowhere near the prices that we had before, even in early 2020. And so as those fuel prices fluctuate, there's a lot of things that go on to help us try and, and mitigate those. When we go to make power, we're looking at how we can use the fuel most efficiently. And it's just like in your car. If you're going to drive from here to California, if you choose a semi truck or you choose a Prius, you're going to choose, pay a very different price in fuel to get there. You'll get there, but you're going to use more or less depending on how you do that. Our generation units work the very same way. They have a similar efficiency. And so they use these fuels that are available to us in a very different way because they're meant for different things. And so when we're looking at our generation planning and how we do that, we're looking at, well, how do we best utilize the fuel that we have to lower the cost to the customer? Some of that is on the fuel side itself through our hedging program, where we look and say, hey, we're looking at forecasts. We have independent consultants that provide us forecasts, and we try to make the best decision and put, put hedges in place. And what that does is that tries to mitigate our risk. It basically says we're going to do what we can, what we know to do now to lower our cost. So as a result of that effort in 2022, we actually saved about $5.2 million, and that was a direct savings that the customer did not have to pay through looking forward at fuel prices and trying our best to remove the risk from them, to de-risk those. Another way that, that, that helps us keep the energy price down is also fuel diversity. So when we, natural gas spikes, we obviously use other forms of generation of fuel sources to help keep that cost low. Most recently, the biomass plant has been the, the lowest producing power plant that we've had as these elevated gas prices have continued. And so we definitely shift and produce more power from cheaper generation based on what's available to us. So before we go forward, I think we have to really understand and define what economic dispatch means, and this is a, a process and a philosophy that we use. And effectively, it's the operation of generation facilities to produce energy at the lowest cost to reliably serve customers, and that you have to recognize operational limits of generation, transmission, and also regulatory requirements. And the takeaway of that is that there are a number of factors that we have to look at. And the takeaway of that is that there are a number of factors that we have to look at to determine the lowest cost to serve our customers. And this philosophy is applied, applied throughout the year, around the clock on our generating, our planning processes. So each month, we look at the next 12 months of generation and projection, not only fuel prices, but also what units we have available. And we take a closer look at the upcoming month to see if there's anything that we need to do differently to help mitigate those costs. Every business day, we take a look at the next seven to 10 days and do that same process and fine tune to see what's available to get the lowest cost that we can. And that process even continues down to the hourly level where someone 24/7/365 is looking at the electric grid. He's looking at the cost of the next megawatt. They're looking at the fuel sources that are available and the cost of those, and then deciding and fine tuning even more how much we use from each generating unit and how we can lower the cost as, as low as possible on the generation side. Now, the first part of that planning process is obviously trying to determine how much we use, are going to use. And this comes into our seasonal patterns of our load shapes and our electrical requirements. We'll go very quickly through these. If you look at the, the red line, that's a typical spring day. You'll have lows in the 50s, highs in the 70s. You'll see there's very low in the morning and it gradually gets higher. You'll see a little peak here, and I'll point to that for the, those in the audience. You see a little peak there that kind of coincides with people getting off work and going home and starting dinner and watching a TV, favorite TV show and those kind of things that come, kind of all at the same time. So you see that little kick at the end there. Moving to the black line, which is a typical fall day, which is what we, the season we just came out of, looks very flat along that time period, but same kind of thing happens at the end of the day. Looking at the yellow line is a typical winter day, which we would consider this typically winter. When you have colder temperatures in the morning, you'll see a peak. They'll drop off and then you'll see another peak in the evening. Again, people leaving work, getting home, starting dinner, doing whatever activities they do at home. And then you'll see this green curve, which is basically a wave that you'll see. Starts low in the morning and climbs steadily until the late afternoon, evening timeframe. And most of that is heating load. The takeaway from this is that our generation system has to be able to meet loads at all of these different levels every hour of every year and the variability that comes along with that. How I meet a load at this point here in, in the spring looks very different than the, than how I meet the load here, that same hour during the summer. And so all those considerations have to be factored in and making sure that we can mitigate those costs. The good thing is we don't have to do that on, on the back of a napkin or our hands. We do have, did I hit something? I don't know what I hit. I just hit them all in there.
Broadcast, do we know what's, what's up with that?
All right. There we go. Thank you. Sorry. I'll put that down. So the good thing is that we don't have to do all these things by hand. We do have a program that takes all these factors that I've discussed before and kind of crunches those numbers on any interval that we want for the next hour or for the next 20 years. And so we do use this extensively. The guys on the desk that are sitting on the desk doing this Operation 24/7/365 has, have access to this program and actually run it on a continual basis to make sure we're re-optimizing what we're doing. So in short, we take the unit data, the efficiencies of those units. We take the fuel cost, we take our load that we have to serve, and we come up with the most economical way to serve the megawatts, the electrical load, the next megawatt that we need to serve for our customers. So I believe this is a, this is a program that we use extensively, but the takeaway is that this is something that happens continually. It's not that we produce it and we set it on a shelf and that we walk away and we come back a few weeks later and say, oh, let's look at this again. This is something that is continually happening around the clock. We're fine tuning what's coming out, what's going in, and making sure that we're doing the best that we can to lower costs for our customers. So with that, that concludes the generation side. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Kenzon, and he will walk you through the rest.
Actually, but before you do that, Mr. Walters, does anybody have any questions regarding that, that first part of the presentation? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioner Kenzon Hutchinson, Chief Customer Officer. And so I'm just going to continue down a path, just talking about some of the assistance that we do offer our customers, which we always are looking to help our customers where we can. The first thing I wanted to kind of, kind of talk about is the home energy surveys that we provide for our customers at no cost to customers. If they feel like they want to be more conservative or find ways to be more conservative, we, we go out and we do surveys and we take a look at their insulation, their windows, check their doors, check their meters. And mainly what we're trying to do is empower our customers to be able to see how their house is actually operating and ways that they can utilize their energy to be more conservative. So we, we constantly push those out. The thing that I'm really excited about is the fact we had an opportunity to serve 392 customers last year. And if you take a look now at 141 customers, you can see that we're probably going to surpass that this upcoming year. And so we're excited about doing that. We are fully staffed in that department and we look forward to really serving our customers at that point. In addition to that, we do have different things that are out on the website, like online home energy calculators, to where you do not have to wait for an agent to come out to do service or to help you be informed. But we do have that available online to where customers are empowered and also encouraged to go out and do those themselves so they can do the research before they get to the place where they feel like it's too much for them. So I'm excited about those different tools we have available. In addition to that, we do have Leap Plus, which hopefully everybody have heard about, where we offer home improvements to our customers. And the number went up with additional funding that we had available from ARPA, where we were able to provide up to $10,000 worth of improvements to our customers' home, where we go out and we may change out their HVAC system, add insulation, change our water heaters. And so I'm excited about the opportunity to be able to serve customers in that avenue. We do have, last year, we performed 135 last year, and we invested $828,000 into those customers' home, which is a big deal. We do have a goal of 240 this year, and we currently have 246 in the queue. So we're definitely going to be able to reach that goal. So I'm definitely excited about that. Big takeaway here is we're constantly doing what we can to make differences in our customers' homes. In addition to those resources, we had received ARPA dollars, which was approved by the commission. And through those ARPA dollars, we've been able to assist customers with $55,000 to help pay off some past due balance that they may have had due to COVID restrictions or COVID hardships that we had. So we're excited to be able to have, help those customers. Big thing with that is, is that money was only used with those customers who live within the city limits. Just the constraints that was with that funding coming from general government. We continue to solicit and work with different agencies to help make sure that if we can find funding, we will find funding to help customers. Constantly have survey leaks out there to really push communication to customers to find those resources. So we do have that available. We did send out 2,000 customer emails, 2,000 emails to customers soliciting more resources or to see, look, hey, is there anything else we could do? We sent out 200 on the 15th, and we do have 250 new customers available that we may be able to assist. And so I'm excited about that. Also, we do have coordinated efforts. And this is a big deal, working with our Florida United Way, Catholic Charities, ERAP. Last year, we were able to partner our customers up with resources and a big dollar figure, $4 million, we were able to connect our customers with, which is a big deal. We impacted 9,000 customers. But in addition to all of that, we're, we're not in the business of doing disconnections. We do have payment plans, we have installment plans. We have things where if customers need a different plans, we're willing to work with them to make sure that they are in good standing with us. So that being said, if no questions for me on this portion, I'll, I'll yield to
Questions?
Communications Director.
No questions for Customer Service. Okay, thank you.
Push them around. David Worm, sorry, Communications Director for GRU. As we have established, we know energy usage is going to increase in the winter. So we want to give customers the tools they need to conserve as much as possible. So we started that this year in November with our bill on certs. And just to make the distinction, if you've never heard the term a bill on cert, similar to a bill insert, except a bill insert is inserted, a loose leaf piece of paper inserted in a bill. On certs are printed on the back of the bill. The advantage of this is that it goes to every customer. An insert only goes to customers that receive a paper bill. So if you're an online customer or you, or any bill customer, you also get this. So we get it out to more people. So we ran an on cert in November and December that offered tips on how to conserve. There's a little perforated square where you could cut out and hang them on your refrigerator if you'd like and check up on that daily. We started radio in December with WUFT. And then later on in the month, as Christmas was approaching, we expanded that to 99 jams and Magic 101.3 and 100.5. Sorry. Appreciate that. In addition to that, well, one other thing about the radio spots that we did a little bit different is we actually, with the tips, we have GRU employees reading them. We started with two employees from Customer Service Department. They did a great job. It just makes it a little more authentic, I think. The website, we, on our homepage, we have a banner, which you can click on the banner and it goes to an inside page which has energy tips. We have an email campaign. Our first one went out in, just before the cold snap in December. And it had a 60% open rate, so it went out 57,000 customers, 60% open, so it's about 34,000. Social media, Facebook and Instagram primarily, ongoing continuously. And we ramped that up if it looks like it's going to get colder. And then press releases go out as needed. We sent one out before Christmas to talk about conservation efforts. And we'll continue doing that whenever it looks like it's going to get colder again. And then let me see if I know how to advance this. And then just to give you an idea of some of the tips, we work with Energy and Business Services on these. And the idea is that you can save energy without sacrificing comfort, but they're, they're fairly simple things like increase your thermostat incrementally, especially if you have a heat pump. You can use, it uses a lot of energy if you go from, you know, 62 to 70 degrees instead of 62 to 63 to 64 gradually increasing it. Set the temperature at 68 degrees or lower, that's a, that's standard. You know, it seems obvious, but wear sweatshirts, use more blankets. I say it seems obvious, but I've got three children, so I realize nothing's obvious. And then some simple things you can do around your house. Probably the easy, well, change filters, but the easiest is probably just if you have a fireplace, make sure the damper is closed if the fireplace is not on, so cold air doesn't get in. And with that, unless you have any questions, I'm going to turn it back over to Kenzon.
Questions? Nope. Thank you.
All right, I'm back again. And so I'm, I'm going to be addressing the, the customer billing concerns that's out there where customers have not been receiving their bills. And of course, most of you've heard about that. So I want to kind of share a little bit of light of how we got here, where we are, and some of the solutions that we have to make sure that we don't run into this concern again. And so first thing is, this, this summer was a really tricky summer for us. We recorded record heat, also with the fuel adjustment being a little bit high, being high. And the inability or the obstacle to maintain and recruit meter readers, it, it created challenges for us and also resulted into longer billing cycles, which was potentially having higher bills. Because of that, we, we made a decision to try to resolve that issue and we made a decision to do mass estimations. And mass estimations, it's, it's normal at the utilities who have meter readers. When you can't get to read meters, there, there's times where weather prevents us from getting out there. It's normal across the industry. And so with this, we had mass estimated meters, not all, but some, every other month, and to help prevent us from having potential high bills. That being said, it caused concerns, it caused issues with our system to really lock down our bills from going out to possibly overcharge customers. So I want, I want to share this and kind of break this down into two different pieces. So we had challenges with meter reading as a whole. First, where since July, January 2022, we had 145% turnover rate with meter readers. Now, that's, that's a big deal because that means that we pretty much lost 100% and a half of our staff in meter reading. What does that yield? That yields inexperience, that, that yields some mistakes, that, that yields a very young workforce. And so that, that happened. And if you take a look, you'll notice that from July 2021 to November 22, our average tenure in that area is only three months. That's, that's, that's very challenging. Now, I do want to state that it's across the board. It's not just in meter readers. It's a national labor shortage out there. There's, it's across the board. And it just so happened to really impact our meter reading department. Also with that, advanced metering infrastructure, it makes, it makes it really difficult to be able to really recruit those individuals because what happens is when we go to AMI Automated Metering Infrastructure, meter readers typically doesn't exist in those organizations, at least as many as we have. And so people typically don't want to apply for a position that seems like it's going to go away. And so because of that, we've, we've really been trying to get some things figured out, how to resolve that. And I'll talk about some of those solutions on the next slide. But because of the, the, the lack of meter readers or the inability to retain meter readers, it caused a couple of things. One, we have no meter readers, meter readers. And so there's times where it's possible that there may be some issues with inaccurate reading. In addition to that, the system, what happens is, is whenever the system looks at those reads, the system automatically will lock those meters if one, if the estimation seems too high or if the meter read itself seems inaccurate based on previous history. It, it seems like, you know what, it shouldn't do that, but it's therefore fail safe. Because one, we don't want our customers in a situation to where we're drafting their account for something that's more than what they utilize. And it really protects the customer. It seems like a negative, but it's really a positive. From that point, what happens is, is when the meter is locked, GRU employees, we have to manually take a look at each one of those accounts to make sure that, hey, is this meter reading exact the way it should be? And if not, we have to take different approaches to make sure that we get an actual read, to make sure that customers aren't overcharged. And so it's a manual process. And I really want to hone in on the fact that it is manual. It's not something that we can automatically set to be resolved. We have to lay eyes on it because the system was made to say, look, we have to manually look at this, at this bill or this account to make sure that we're not overcharging customers. Resulting from that, our customers, some customers have received multiple bills. Of course, we, we get the calls, we do hear those. And so some customers have received multiple calls, multiple bills in a month because it's just taken us so long to actually get through those bills. And when we do, multiple months have passed and it's just been challenging for us to get those bills out. So that was the perfect storm. That's, that's how we got here and that's kind of where we are. With that being said, we do not just want to bring problems, we want to bring solutions. And that's why we're here today to talk about the solutions and what we've been doing to kind of get through the concerns that we have. And so first thing, from a meter reading standpoint, we no longer have been doing mass estimations since December 5th. Now, what does that look like? That means that we're no longer mass estimating major routes or whole routes anymore. I do want to make this clear that we do do some estimations. If there's bad dogs or lock gates and those things, those things will continue and we will continue to work with customers to get those resolved. But we will have some of those estimations. I wanna be transparent about that because, you know, customers may say, well, you said you're gonna stop estimating. But there will be times in those cases where we will have to estimate until we actually get a chance to lay eyes on the meters. We've rediverted resources, we've called people back. Those people who may have worked in other departments, who may have retired, we called those folks back to help read meters. We've been working over the weekends and also over the holidays to make sure that we're able to get these meters read, so it's not contributing to more locked reads or locked bills. Also, in addition to that, we've updated our job profile to be able to retain meter readers and to get more meter readers to come and work for us, to, to really help make sure we have enough resources to read meters. In addition to that, we did contract with a third party to be able to help. Just in case we do have vacancies, they'll be able to help us fill some of those vacancies in the meantime until we get our employees hired up, so we aren't lacking and have enough resources to go out and read meters. Also, you know, when we're hiring employees, it's sometimes challenging to keep them when it's a temporary position. And so we went from temporary positions to permanent. And so, of course, once we go to the AMI process, we're not looking to just terminate those employees. We're gonna have a plan to try to transition those employees into other positions. And hopefully through just attrition, they'll promote into other jobs within an organization, which I think is a really good thing. But then also, HR is exploring options to, to really help us with pay, to, to retain employees in that role. Of course, you know, there's some people who are walking seven miles a day and it's sometimes challenging and it's a hard job. And so we're looking at a compensation package that will help us maintain those employees. And I don't know whether that... If, if, if you're, if you're good, if you wanna just speak to that. Okay, I'll let you speak to that before I move on.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. So, thank you, Kinzon. So obviously, as, as we discovered these issues, as I would fully expect that we would do, we all worked, pulled together and started working very collaboratively on putting our heads together on what we could do to kinda fix these things and right the ship, if you will. So from a staffing perspective, the turnover is huge, understandably so. And as Kinzon said, part of the reason is because it is a very difficult job that I don't know that, as people signed up for it, realized just how tedious and how difficult it was until they actually got in the trenches, almost literally, in some places, to, to do the job. And again, because of AMI coming on board, it's sort of a catch 22 because we need people to help us continue to read meters and get things installed. But with the advent of new technology, while it's gonna help in many, many ways for the utility and our customers, it, it is a double-edged sword in terms of staffing. So from an HR perspective, a couple of things we did. So this job had been posted on an ongoing basis because it's an ongoing need. And we discovered on our job postings page, which is five pages long, by the way, because we have over 80 positions that we're actively seeking to fill right now. We changed up that job posting process so that the meter reader position is always prominently on the first page of the job posting place. We made that change back in December. And since that time, I believe we're up to a total of 60 applications that have come in. So it's made a considerable difference. The other thing that we looked to do is, we escalated the amount of time that HR was screening applications. So we moved from screening them on a weekly basis to a daily basis. Now, that has a ripple effect, though. So while we start churning, it then gets put in the department's lap. They have to actually review those folks. Many things have been kinda put in place. We've been able to reduce what we call in HR, the time to fill for these positions. It was averaging over 80 days to do so. We've cut that down to just about 50, and I think that's becoming less. Now, it's important to know that time to fill, there's multiple factors involved. That includes from the time the job is advertised to the time we get the applicants, then HR screens the applicants, we then send it to the department, they have to review. They have to select the candidates they wanna interview. Once they do interview those candidates and make selections, then we get them back to onboard them. So it's very much a team effort and team process, and it requires coordination on both ends. The other thing I just wanted to mention also is compensation. So I think, as you can see from the number of applications that are coming in, I'm not convinced that it's the entry pay that is causing the problem. The way the compensation is set up right now is we provide a carrot, if you will. So our, our meter readers who come onboard, if they stay six months, they get an additional bump in their pay. One of the things that we're exploring right now with the folks at GRU is escalating that so that we provide that bump every three months rather than every six months. And I think that may help us make an impact on that short tenure time that we have with folks right now. But, you know, compensation is a tricky thing. And I'll just remind you all, and I think you know this, as we look at that, we have to consider it very holistically. We have to consider the compression that that will make in other jobs and in other areas. So it is a, it is a tight rope, a bit of a tight rope that we're walking, but we're willing and committed to walk that together with the folks from GRU. And I think I've covered that piece. Good?
Thanks for the teamwork. So, so resolving the meter reading issue or concern, the obstacle, it helps with us having the resources and ability to be able to get bills out. The less estimations, the less inaccurate reading, the less issues that the software has to actually lock those bills to get bills out. And so from a billing standpoint, we shifted staff from other departments to come back and really work in the system to help get bills out. We've been working overtime every day, working weekends, of course, holidays. But in addition to that, we bought back retired employees, but also contracted with a third party who specialize in this software that we have to actually go in and help navigate through, look at the bills, look at what makes sense, to help release some of the invoices that we have to bill customers. Big thing here is communication is key. We're always looking to improve the way we communicate to our customers. We try to get out in front of concerns and issues as much as possible. But of course, we created a frequently asked questions on the website. So if customers have questions, of course, they can definitely call us, but we do have frequently asked questions on the website. That can hopefully answer a lot of those questions without them actually getting into the call queue. And then also, we sent out, I think it was over 50,000 emails, David? We sent out over 50,000 emails to customers kinda talking about this concern and how with the frequently asked questions to help kinda resolve some of the questions and concerns that are out there in the community. Lessons learned. Of course, we're always trying to do continuous improvement. And so mass estimations, it, it literally was well-intended because with longer billing cycles, of course, you would equate that to longer, higher bills. And so the mass estimation, it was set to try to shorten the billing cycles and really help with guarding our customers. But we had unintended consequences. And so we, we've learned that. Also, with remote metering, it's one of the most, most essential than ever to where we will be able to not run into this issue. We'll be able to read meters on a daily or monthly basis. And in addition to that, customers will have that information at their, information at their fingertips to be able to control or be empowered to handle technology and to control their destiny as it relates to their utility bills. In addition to that, we must maintain staffing levels to avoid mass estimation this summer and in the future. And I believe with AMI, that's gonna help us through that process. So, so key takeaways that I want you to walk away with. One is, please be well assured that we've reassigned staff and we're all in on trying to get bills out to our customers. We've hired contractors, we bought back retired employees to resolve the meter reading issue and also the billing concern that's out there with our invoices. Also, we're taking several steps to prevent this from happening in the future. One, especially through AMI, we're, we're gonna continue to walk down that path. Also, making sure that we, even if it takes longer hours, gonna make sure we ensure that we do that. But definitely staffing is gonna be important. That's one of our key goals here. In addition to that, we, we are constantly assisting customers. So if a customer had multiple bills or the bill is more than what they can pay, we're constantly giving out installment, working with our customers with installment plans, additional time if need be, and also connecting them to resource to help them with their payments. Now, I do wanna mention this, and I'll, I'll talk about this, is, you know, if you do not get your bill, and I want us to communicate this out, you know, if customers do not receive their bill, please look at what your average payment is and at least make that payment so you're not deferring those bills into, to, you're not deferring those bills to where they're constantly compiling and compiling and then you expect to make that one payment that month. And so it's definitely recommended that they do make some type of payment. And if customers have any concerns on how to do that or what they should pay, as I mentioned, you'll see here, they can definitely contact us at 334-3434. Any questions?
Commissioner Willetts. With customers who weren't receiving bills and had to, or have been suggested that they make a, some sort of a payment with the estimate, does the GRU website show the current fuel adjustment so they could do any math on their own? Because it does change month to month, you know?
Right, it changes month to month. So customers typically have up to three years' worth of billing history. And so if you take what you paid last year or over the last three months, you can take an average and then you can make that payment.
Right, but my, my specific question is, does GRU regularly show the fuel adjustment charge per kilowatt at all up to date beyond a bill pay, an example bill from a year or two ago? That is merely an example of what the fuel adjustment might be.
I guess, Dave Warne, do you wanna talk about what's on the website regarding the fuel adjustment? What the website actually shows?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The question is basically, how up to date on, publicly on GRU's website, is the current, as current as possible, fuel adjustment rate? So that people can understand it for, for bill estimation? Or just to have a clear record of that, what it is currently?
I mean, it, it's the current rate, so it's up to date. We have a GRU.com/fueladjustment, where we have information, frequently asked questions, and we update what the adjustment is there.
Okay, and I have one extra question. And this was about the estimated months that we experienced this summer, a lot of mass estimates. When, when electric, electric use goes over the tier on an estimate, do customers ever at some point in the future get the premium they paid for having gone over the tier in an estimated month somehow back to them? Do they somehow pay less in the future? I don't just mean that the future bill may have a lower kilowatt because now someone's really read it and now those two, you know, those two months have been penciled out. But if you go over the, the tier, you're paying more per kilowatt at any point? Is that ever made right with our customers?
So, yes, the following month, if a customer utilizes, for example, if a customer was estimated and they were estimated 50 kilowatts over the 850 kilowatts, the next month, they're short 50 of those kilowatts, if that makes sense. Because when they actually go out to do the, the actual read, it's less than what they normally would have used. And then reality is, on top of that, it's been very minute with those. So it hadn't been quite, it hadn't been many at all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hesman.
Thank you. Kinzon, sorry if I missed this, but what is the starting pay for meter readers right now?
I think it's at $16 and 1681 an hour.
And is there any minimum education requirements or anything like that for, any minimum requirements for a position?
High school and six months' worth of public contact.
All right, just to put it out there, in case anyone knows, anyone who wants to make, you said 1681?
Yes.
1681 an hour and is interested in becoming a meter reader?
And then after, and then after six months, I think it goes up to what, what dollar figure, Laura? After six months, what does it go up to? Is it $17 and? $17.45 after six months.
All right, great. I, I mean, it sounds like a great entry level position for a lot of folks. And so if anyone who's happened to be watching or in the audience knows anyone who'd be interested, it seems like something we could really use in the city right now.
Commissioner, Dr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kinzon, I got a little concerned when I heard that there was potentially a chilling effect of AMI coming on board and any meter readers who may fear for their positions when it comes on. So I think I have two questions. When, if you would refresh my memory for when we are scheduled to fully implement AMI? I know it's a way out, but...
Right, it'll be over the next couple of years.
Yeah, so next couple of years. Meanwhile, this 145% turnover rate, which just about had me on the floor, is, is concerning. So my question is, is there a plan currently? Or is there a way that we are incentivizing meter readers in terms of when AMI does come on board? Because if people are fearing, you know, or trying to find something else right now because they know that it's on its way, and we are suffering in terms of this turnover rate, I'm curious as to what we're doing to say to them, hey, listen, you can still have a job here at GRU if that is possible. What have been our conversations, what's our thought process or our visioning in terms of that?
Right, so I can, I can speak to that. So, so first thing is, typically when any utility transitioned to AMI, this, this happens because, because of the need to, not as much of a demand for manual meter readers, it kinda goes away. And so this is something that happens across the board industry when you go into AMI. With that being said, of course, we're, we're encouraging those employees to apply for those roles because typically what happens when we have meter readers in those positions, they transition into other positions within the department. I often think about meter readers now. We transition them into field service techs who go out and do disconnect, turn on, turn off. They also transition into the water department, which is one of the major departments that they transition to. There are multiple departments, so we're constantly communicating that across the board. I don't know whether there's a set, set plan for all employees, but I'm certain there, there is no plan to lay anybody off. I'm certain there'll be some type of plan, which I'll, I'll let general managers speak to that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll just add to that. So the idea would be to give these folks priorities for jobs across the city, both at GRU and across the whole city. As they, if they meet minimum qualifications and are qualified for jobs, they would have some priority in filling those roles. We have, the HR director could give more specific numbers, but generally at GRU, we have around 12 or 13% vacancy factor right now, meaning 12 to 13% of our positions are unfilled and we're seeking to fill those. And then across the city, I think that number's even higher, like 15 or 16%. So there are a, a number of positions across the city that are open. Obviously, not all the meter reader may be qualified for all those positions, but with the number of positions we see open, I think there is a good transition, ability for them to transition into the roles. Earlier this year, I had reversed sort of the decision to go to temporary employees and back to permanent employees. And the, one of the reasons we did that is to retain the employees. But the other reason is, is knowing that there are gonna be other roles for them to go into, it brings them in and kinda buys them into, to our organization better. And so I think that has, that has helped. And we do think there will be many opportunities for that to happen. The other piece I will just say about AMI is, this is going to happen over time. So this isn't like, oh, all of a sudden on Wednesday, everything's done. We're gonna be slowly needing less meter readers over a multi-year period. And so that will allow for positions that are open and available as well.
Thank you.
So not Wednesday, but Thursday? Kidding, don't. Okay, Commissioner Justin.
Thank you. If I remember correctly, I believe at our December 13th meeting, we said, please move to paying $20 an hour because it was our understanding that you were losing people because every time you try to hire, the other companies within the city are raising their rate, they're paying 20 an hour, that... And the message we sent at that meeting was that this is a crisis. We need to address it immediately. Now, what happened to, because what's, $16 may sound like a good salary. It's not getting people hired. And that was the reason we said move to 20 with all deliberate speed so that we can get people hired.
So I might ask Laura to come up as I start to answer the question. So we, we heard that direction from the commission and started to consider how to do that. And some of the challenges just are, we have a, these employees are under CWA contracts, so that has to be negotiated. So if we're gonna change that salary, that's something that has to be negotiated with the union. In addition to that, I think the brainstorming of some of these different ideas that... In addition to that, I think the brainstorming of some of these different ideas that we don't necessarily need to negotiate, such as accelerating that first step, uh, that took from six months to three months, is something that we can do that can break, that can retain those employees. The other strategies that Laura laid out also started to lead towards significantly more applicants coming in. So, uh, as she described, currently I have sixty on the board. That is a significant amount to get us fully staffed. And then the last piece I'll just add is we also, uh, I think we touched on in the presentation, but we also looked at a a third-party hu- uh, firm to kind of do that hiring and bring those people in so that we make sure even with turnover, they're going to guarantee that we have that staff available. And so to fill in the gaps, Laura, from...
Oh, the third-party, uh, company has been hired, is that what you're saying?
I believe the contract is done. Yes, I'm seeing head shakes. I know we've been, we've been, we work, we're working on it through the Christmas break and, uh, that has been completed. They have a period of time to bring in people, and I believe next week, end of next week, uh, is their deadline to when they'll they'll then be here supplementing the...
Okay, and what is the specialty of the third-party company you're talking about? This is what, just explain, this is what...
Yeah, so it's like a staffing firm that it's going to have meter readers continuously staffed and guaranteed six meter readers all the time.
Okay.
So if they have turnover, they're going to have to have another one right behind to fill that as part of the contractual relationship.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, I think Tony really covered it quite well, so he's, you're a good student of all things HR. Um, so Tony is right. So as as the discussion ensued since your last meeting and we looked more at the data, it seemed clear, um, after we made some tweaks to the hiring process, we're getting people in, it looks like the problem is keeping them. And so that's part of these discussions on escalating, um, those steps. Um, and as Tony said, if we if we do look at increasing pay, that we would have to discuss that with the CWA, which is not undoable. I mean, we can certainly do it, um, but we're trying to kind of look at it holistically in that way. Does that help?
Okay, and when will, when will the third-party company be on board?
Chad Parker is the director of that area, and so he has the the best detail. Thanks, Chad.
Good afternoon. So the third-party, they're actually getting started right now. They deliver vehicles and they're getting staffed as we speak. So within the next week or two, they'll be onsite reading meters.
Okay, thank you. I think that that might be something important to communicate to the public. Maybe the communications director can help us get some information out, uh, just so we're keeping the public abreast of the steps we're taking to address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buck.
Uh, so just a brief comment. When I was, uh, doing the onboarding and orientation, I appreciate the fact that I actually spoke to several of your staff and they had come in at one level of the organization and then under basically what was retention plan as opposed to now they're recruited, they were getting additional career and technical workforce and education skills and moving on. And I think that's what was being referenced down there to that upward mobility elsewhere in the organization because you do have to have some real strategies for recruitment. But once you get them in there, the value that you show to those folks is so essential. And so I appreciated hearing, um, from both HR and some of the GRU staff that they were really hyper-focused on keeping them once they were in the organization, uh, similar to what I what I heard down the days.
Thank you all. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, less about what we're doing right now than than looking forward several months. We know that this summer's going to be hot, probably hotter than last summer. We know that's going to to increase the volume of phone calls, uh, to ask questions about their bill. We also know that come August, there's going to be a huge turnover because there is every August, um, with with students coming to town and needing to turn their their power off and on. We traditionally run into to that wall and have for a very long time. I know that we probably do some staffing up prior to that seasonally. My hope this year is that we supercharge that however we can and and really get creative on on how to approach that. The much of the rest of the community, I I used to work many, many, many years ago with the apartment rental community and and they solved part of their problem with with turnovers by changing when the leases turned over. There was a time when most large apartments turned all their leases over in one weekend. They stopped doing that because it was a disaster every single year and everybody looked toward it with absolute dread, as they should. But they managed to fix that. And I feel like that's a paradigm we could shift as well, but we really have to do it intentionally. And whatever we've been doing in the past is not enough. It doesn't work a- as well as it needs to work. We, I think, would absolutely be open to to ideas and creativity on on how to make that better. Because what we run into, I think, finances are are one thing, personal finances are one thing, but i- it kind of adds insult to injury when you have to sit on hold or hear a recording that says, we have a whole lot of people moving into town, we're real sorry, you're going to have to wait. We know that they're moving here, so I I, and again, I know that you do some things behind the scenes to to try to to alleviate that, but whatever we're doing needs to be magnified. We need to do more of it so that when people call up worried about their very high bill from a very hot summer, that they're not also faced with, and I've got to sit here for an hour? So I I think that, I won't speak for everybody, but I know I would absolutely be interested in hearing some some creative outside-the-box solutions for how we work toward that this coming summer. And to do that, we got to know about those in the spring, right? So so that and backtracking way to the beginning here to to fuel, I I feel like there might be an opportunity in summer maybe or or next fall, I I don't know exactly when, to back off the fuel surcharge if trends continue to go the way they're going. Can you talk to me a little bit more about that and to the community so that we we see some light at the end of the tunnel?
Yeah, so, um, on the fuel adjustment, uh, so every month, we evaluate the the fuel adjustment. So we have a fuel levelization balance. The idea of that balance is is we're, we have costs coming in on fuel to generate power. Uh, we we know what we, those costs come in and then we're collecting from customers to meet that cost. And that is supposed to be a net zero transaction, so we're passing through the cost of fuel. That's what happens in the power industry. And so so this year, uh, so we're bringing everybody up to speed. Natural gas prices skyrocketed this year. And when I say skyrocketed, uh, more than tripled, um, from the beginning of the year to the peak, uh, in the in the summertime. And so with that, the fuel adjustment was needed to be raised, uh, and all utilities were doing this, some quicker, some slower than others, but they're raising that fuel adjustment, that portion of your bill to go toward that fuel cost. That still remains at a pretty high level right now. Uh, and what the mayor was referencing is eventually when our balance, our fuel levelization fund balance is that is that gets closer back to zero, it's in the negative. So we've paid more for fuel, uh, out to generate power than we've collected from customers. So it's in the negative. As it's marching its way back closer to zero and that net zero, then we can start to lower that fuel adjustment. And we're hoping that natural gas prices don't go back high like they were. So they they peaked in the summer, they've come back down a little bit, but nowhere near where they were last year. Uh, but we're hoping as we get out of winter, if winter's not too bad, uh, that that fuel uh, may may come be able to come back down. And we will do that, we evaluate that every single month to determine when and if that adjustment can be made back down. And so hopefully, that'll be something we can do as we approach the summer and and usage goes back up.
And and when we say we, that that's the entire utility industry. Anybody who's making energy with natural gas is facing similar...
Correct.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, uh, so no further questions up here right now? Let's open this up to the public. If you have specific questions about the presentations that were made, this would be a a good time for them. Not broadly, but if you have questions about these presentations, let's address them now.
Tana Civil.
Thank you. It's heroic what GRU is doing to try to straighten things out. I had a a experience my my name, back when the GRU bills just skyrocketed out of the blue seemingly. A neighbor, um, wasn't even at home for the entire month. She was, you know, attending to family elsewhere. And she got a bill that was three times the normal, you know, bill that she would pay. And, um, she knew it was a mistake and she got on the phone and they said, well, no, it's it is what it's, it it is what it is. So she, um, took her phone, she took a picture of the electric meter, sent it in, and they said, okay, we'll look at that. Um, and she, uh, and they adjusted it accordingly because the the electric meter was, you know, was not even red at all. It was just estimated ridiculously high. So it occurs to me that that might, I mean, I know it's, it would be a small fraction probably of the problems, but I know myself, when I've got, you know, a water bill that is is ridiculously high, it's like three times my usual, um, I just go check the meter myself, I call in and they say, okay, we'll have somebody come out and check it, then, you know, they they take it out of the next bill. But is there a possibility that self-reporting using our phone cameras, um, could be a one little interim step for people who, you know, ha- have extraordinarily high bills or questionable bills to go out and just take a picture of your water meter, your gas meter, whatever it was that went off the charts all of a sudden? Because I, that's worked for me in the past, worked for my neighbor, and it wouldn't, you know, resolve all the problems, but, you know, I think, um, th- there should be a way that that could be intercepted and 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 make an adjustment that way. And I will say that I am not a fan of AMI, um, and I'm apprehensive about its implementation. There are a lot of problems with it. Um, sometimes the the water meter spins and, you know, then we have no way to check it. You know, as we do now, we we can go out individually and check our meters and and work with GRU on that. Once it's in that black box, it could be anything and we won't know. So and there are a lot of costs that are are not being anticipated in addition to the eighty million dollars to set it up, to change out a hundred thousand customers, three meters, um, to basically three hundred thousand meters and all of that. So it's not going to be pie in the sky for sure. So that's just something that I I would like to be able to opt out.
Madam Clerk, you ready?
Okay, all right. So so speaking of of AMI, I I want to make sure that that we're all aware of of where we are with that. What, um, what percentage of utilities across America are using AMI already?
Yeah, it's it's approximately seventy-five percent of utilities already have it. We're kind of, you know, late to the game, especially our side's utility.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments about this, Madam Clerk, we can move on to the next item. Thank you all, by the way.
The next item is item number twenty-two-two-dash-one-seven-seven. Commissioner Chestnut reinstates single-family, future land use and zoning categories and other related changes with the recommendation that the commission direct staff to initiate petitions to reinstate single-family future land use and zoning in the city in all areas where those designations existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance numbers two-one-three-five-seven, two-one-three-five-eight, and two-one-three-five-nine, as well as to reinstate the other related changes made by those ordinances.
Commissioner Chestnut, do you want to take us the lead on that?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor. This is a, an issue that's familiar to all of us because according to the Gainesville Sun and the Main Street Daily News, it was the top issue of the year. If you talked to any candidate out campaigning last year, they really didn't get to talk about anything else but exclusionary zoning, exclusionary zoning, single-family zoning. So the public, while the public was not brought into this issue at the beginning and didn't wasn't educated on it, by the time we finished, a five-year-old could tell you what exclusionary zoning was all about because we got so much information on it. The thing about this is that it brought, uh, a lot of neighborhoods to the table, a lot of new people to the table who became interested in city government because they, this issue hit home with them. It hit home with them because it's an issue that was going to impact their own personal property value. For many people, a home is the single most important investment they are going to make. And that's where, uh, as an African American, I can say, that is where we build generational wealth. So to devalue that hits home and hits home very hard. So therefore, I, um, I had a town hall on this issue. I attended meetings everywhere, as the candidates did as well. And the only candidate I heard to really voice in opposition to it consistently, it's very consistent, was Commissioner Willetts. Um, and I said that on January fifth, I will come to the commission with, uh, a motion to take whichever words you want, resend, repeal, but get rid of this and take us back to where we were. Now, if we go back to where we were before, uh, October seventeenth, then if someone wants to come and adjust it, someone wants to come to make changes, then you can involve the community and come back for changes. But to do this in a blanket state, that as the way it was done, was not the proper way to go. It was very, very divisive racially, economically, and our city needs time to heal, heal. We need to also be able to address other issues. The city needs to move and address, I mean earnestly, the issue of housing. We we got, we got to get our housing plan on the board. We've spent a year talking about this, exclusionary zoning, single-family zoning. So it's time to move on from there and to, um, uh, uh, to get about the business of doing the city business. Now, um, the issue has been raised. Someone said, well, if we do this, it means that it's a, that it's a comprehensive plan amendment, we have to go through that process. Well, see, no one was concerned last year when they started this, that this whole thing was a comprehensive plan amendment. And it's sitting in Tallahassee right now. All been back, back and forth. But that was not the concern. The concern must be with the people, and the people have spoken very loud and very clear, get rid of this, repeal, resend, get rid of it, go back to where we were. And that is what, uh, I'm recommending, Mr. Mayor. And my recommendation is this, to direct staff to initiate petitions to reinstate single-family future land use and zoning in the city and all the areas where those designations existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance numbers two-one-three-five-seven, two-one-three-five-eight, and two-one-three-five-nine, as well as to reinstate the other related changes made by those ordinances. Second.
All right.
That is a motion.
Uh, so Commissioner Chestnut, I I had wondered if we might hear from from the attorney to just to to talk about the process so that we can be clear about it. There's been a lot of of conversation about what the right process might be. And I will tell you that, first of all, I support the motion, as I spent several months telling you I would support. But I want to make absolutely sure that what we do does not expose us to lawsuits back in the other direction, that that we that we proceed in a defensive legally defensible manner so that that it works. Then, as Commissioner Chestnut said, when we finish that process, there are things that that we should have conversations about. I've from the beginning said that I think lot splits are something that would be really useful to the community. We ought to have those conversations. But first, we we need to start this process and move backwards. So if we could hear from the attorney, I think that would be useful to us all to to understand what this road looks like going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where we are right now is this commission passed the three ordinances back in October that did away with the single-family zoning throughout the city, created new zoning categories, and did a, made a bunch of other related changes. The land use and zoning aspects of those have been, and that was done through the traditional way where petitions came before the plan board, came to this body for first reading, the complaint amendments go to Tallahassee for review, they came back with comments, second reading was approved, and then the ordinance for all effects was passed then. The effective date hadn't, has not occurred yet. And they are currently on challenge before a DOWA hearing officer, a Department of the Administrative Hearings hearing officer right now. now. Legislatively, if it is the intent of this body to reverse course now and to undo those changes related to exclusionary zoning and the other related matters that were covered in those ordinances, what we would do traditionally is you make changes legislatively by the same formality in which you changed them in the first place. So we would pass, the ordinances have been passed, we would pass other ordinances that would then undo those, for lack of a better words. Essentially, in those three ordinances that were mentioned, the petition would come back, I presume, where all the lines that were underlined meeting new text would become strikeouts. All the lines that were strikeouts, which was deleting text, would become underlines to put things back the way they were. That would go through the petition process to the Plan Board, come to you for first reading. At that time, there'll be obviously ample opportunity for public hearing, public comment, public discussion. It would be sent back to the state. I suspect that would be a rather quick review, quicker than the last time probably, but you never know. And then they would come back with whatever comments the state has for second reading wherein then it would be, if it passed, it'd be back to where we were prior to October. As to the litigation surrounding the ordinances that passed last October, I think it would be incumbent upon us, really as ultras of the court, to, if legislatively this body has made a 180-degree turn like that, to notify the opposing counsel and to notify the hearing officer that it would be appropriate to hold the proceeding in abeyance while we see if the ordinances were reversed legislatively. And that's what I expect would happen, and that would also conserve resources both in the parts of the petitioners, obviously, but also as well on the part of the city. There's no point fighting for something that is no longer desired by our policy setters. That is the way we would recommend going forward if that is the intent legislatively of this body. I know that Attorney for the Petitioners has contacted our office, as well as, I think, some of the other opponents to the changes from last year, putting forth a plan to use what's called a compliance agreement. It's provided for in the statutes, and there's been a lot of discussion about that, and we've frankly spent a great deal of time researching it to see if it would fit, to see if it was an expedited way to carry this out again, if that's the intent of the commission. The problem with that is, what you'd find when you review the statutes dealing with the compliance agreement is it's designed, and I have with us Sean McDermott, he's worked a great deal of this, and obviously Andrew Persson is here as well, the compliance agreement process is designed when you have a comp plan amendment that's passed to local government and is being challenged at the Department of Administrative Hearings. It's the idea that you may have portion or portions, that's what's referred to in the statute, that you may agree to change such that the overall comp plan amendments would then be in compliance. Well, that's not what my understanding, the mover, the movement of this motion is talking about. They're talking about basically abolishing those changes. So we're not seeking to bring past comp plan amendments into compliance, we're seeking to essentially reverse them. Again, I keep saying if that's the rule because I don't want to jump ahead, but just to set forth where we are. So we don't think that compliance agreement process really fits. And the question about whether it fits, gee frank, we have concerns, would just lead to further litigation from the other side. So it brings us back to the way we generally change our ordinances. And ordinances were passed late last year. They're under challenge, but they were passed. The way we would normally change them is by the same formality, and I think that's what the motion is, is to give direction for our staff and my office to begin the process to, again, underlines become strike through, strike throughs become underlines, it goes to the Plan Board, it comes back to you, and there will be ample opportunity for the public discussion, public hearings, requirement for public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Manager, did you have anything to add to that? Are you good?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Buck, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had one of the same questions that you just posed, which was what are the risks, you know, if we kind of turn back the clock on a decision that was made about three months ago? And I actually had two or three very logistical questions. This particular issue is amongst the most complex, and for those who have gone to the backup items that are in here, attempt to read those and get clarity is very, very difficult, especially when you do not have a background in zoning and land use. I don't have that background, so I've really studied an enormous amount simply to try and come up to speed at a level that makes me speak intelligently at the table. I do agree with what I already heard. We've already had tremendous community input on this. This is not one where we're starting fresh because all 2022, even on the campaign trail, and this is probably the same thing with my other two new colleagues, I couldn't knock on a door where I didn't get one or two questions. One dealt with potential political affiliation, and that was a difficult one to navigate, and the other one dealt with, "Are you for or against this neighborhood thing?" or something like that. And I'm putting it in a manner that was coming before me, and then I would provide, you know, my thoughts about that at that time. So the community input process is complete, even though it happened to be day one for three of us. So in that regard, we have to make some decisions. My question, I think this question might be for you, Mr. City Attorney, is just because I don't have the understanding, is now we have removed, Commissioner Chestnut may know the answer to this too, we've removed the one particular component that deals with that owner occupied. Has that been removed off the component of your agenda? Is that your motion, is that accurate?
That's a separate motion.
That's separate and distinct, so we're not actually debating that right now, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. And then, thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. City Attorney, you described a process where we go through the City Plan Board, back through that process, similar to what occurred initially. Is that a requirement?
Yes, that is, and Attorney McDermott might have some input as well. I don't know if you've met Sean McDermott. He really is our specialist in land use and planning in the office.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission, Sean McDermott, Assistant City Attorney. Just to clarify, I think, Commissioner, your question, Commissioner Chestnut's motion would include reversing all the changes that were made in those three ordinances that were adopted in October 2000, or October of last year, so, which includes reimposing the occupancy limit that was eliminated by those ordinances. So that is included within Commissioner Chestnut's motion.
It's the residency restriction in the university context area. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor? Sorry.
Just one other question, really deals with rules of procedure for the City Commission, and this is one that's been posed to me, so I'm probably not well-versed enough to know, is do we have to temporarily suspend the rules of what we do because this motion was voted down three months ago to be able to move forward on a potential new vote?
Mr. Mayor, no, this is, ordinances were passed, and this would be new ordinances passed that go back in the opposite direction. That's the nature of the legislative process. There were changes made to our local law, and these are changes to our local law again that may move it back the way it was before, even though there hasn't been an effective date of those past ordinances because it's still in litigation. But no, there's no need to waive any rules or anything.
If it were a recension, my understanding is, just to be clear, if we're an absolute recension process, then that would need to be a motion made by somebody who was on the winning side last time.
That's typically under Roberts rules. We don't follow that strictly.
But that's been a, we've traditionally used that process, we did it a couple times last year, but that's not what we're doing here. It's not a specific recension of a vote. It's building new ordinances that, in effect, reset.
Yes, sir. That's precisely what I was getting at. I want to make sure that as we do take a vote, it's as clean as possible and reduces as much as possible our ability to continue to have to deal with this, as already has been said, because we have other things also to deal with. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, and I want to thank Commissioner Chestnut for bringing this forward. If you had not, I wanted to bring this up a Commissioner comment for the reason that I think, I mean, as everyone mentioned, everyone knows where, we all stand on this. I probably know more about how you guys feel about single-family zoning than I know about any members of my own family, what they think about things, right? This is, we know where we stand on it. We know where this is going. I just want to say that our, I was hoping that for this first meeting, that we'd really be putting our best foot forward for what this commission and what the tone is going to be. And I wanted that first tone to be that we are going to have community engagement, that we are going to be following, listening to the data, listening to our staff, working together to try to find common ground. Our staff has worked hundreds and hundreds of hours on this. The prior commission put things within this that I certainly disagree with and I would like to see rolled back, but there are certain portions of it that I don't disagree with. Mr. Commissioner Buck, you mentioned the occupancy limit. I thought our old occupancy limit was far too strict. I don't know how I feel about having it be completely gone, but I'm happy to have that conversation. Commissioner Mayor Ward, you mentioned lot splits. Lot splits, minimum lot size requirements, these are the things that, when I mentioned in my speech, the decisions that commissions past have made that have stopped families like mine from being able to purchase homes, those are the main restrictions that caused that. It stopped us from building smaller homes. It stops our city from building homes on any lot that's not a perfectly sized lot with a certain type of dimension to it. It means that starter homes, like the one that I'm raising my daughter in, are mostly illegal under the new code. There are certain portions of this code that, like I said, staff has worked hard on. I think the proper process for how we would do this is to turn to staff and say, "Staff, we would like to eliminate single-family zoning. Can you come back to us with how we could eliminate single-family zoning?" Or perhaps we'd like to say, "We are interested in putting duplexes," or "We would like to roll back the scale." Then they would come back to us with the data and the policies of how we could do that under our current code. What Commissioner Chestnut put forward here is certainly one direction. It is also the most litigious. It is the most likely to result in a lawsuit compared to, I put an alternative motion that puts a number of different ways that we could, most of which protect single-family zoning, ways like just removing multifamily out of the current use, under that current zoning category. You can just remove multifamily in about a month, and you would keep a lot of the other stuff that's in there. You could zone it to U1, which is an existing single-family zoning district. You could, I would like to have some discussions about multifamily units on property. I probably don't have the votes for that, listening to the conversations here today, but I think these are good discussions to have. I would like for us to follow a more thoughtful process on it. This is coming to us about 24 hours. This came out a little bit last night. I know it's roughly in the same format from the beginning to here, but I would like for us to, with respect to our staff, with respect to one another, to just have an ability to have this conversation, to look at alternative rollback methods. And one of the things I'd like to point out that Dan Neem mentioned is this is a comp plan update. It will go back to the Plan Board. The Plan Board will discuss it for a while. It will come back to us. It will go through multiple ordinance readings. During that time period, single-family zoning is dead in the city of Gainesville. I've come up with an alternative motion that first and foremost begins the process of implementing a development moratorium on neighborhood-scale multifamily for a six-month period, which means not in six months would we stop multifamily from coming into neighborhoods. By the end of this month, we would be protecting single-family homes within neighborhoods. It would schedule a properly noted special meeting at a time convenient for community engagement to discuss options for revising the October 17 zoning and direct staff on how the commission would like to move forward. Staff, bring back data and analyses on the three agenda items and motions proposed by Commissioner Chestnut, as well as the alternative rollback methods that I've outlined on the same document, which, as I said, included many options for how you would protect single-family zoning while keeping some of those other options there. And then staff, bring back data and analyses on how these land use changes could impact affordable housing, environmental sustainability, historic preservation, and equity. I would like to follow a more thoughtful process that really tells staff that we care about their expertise, that just because a decision was made by a prior commission does not mean that we should throw the baby out with the bathwater for the whole rest of these zoning changes.
Do you concur?
I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman, and Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. There was one line you said, and I think the attorney showed a concern as well as I. You said, "Single-family, something would be illegal."
I think I said starter.
The housing that you live in.
So I live in a little, many of the neighborhoods that were built prior, ours, the zoning code that we had just overruled, it's hard to say prior or the prior one, but the one that we had just overruled was built in 1958. So it was, you have large setbacks, you have 8,500 minimum lot size requirements. Sorry not to get in two of the weeds up here. I'd rather just have a broad conversation, but if you look at some of the older neighborhoods within our city, that's where you'll see a lot of the smaller homes that young families can afford, like in Duck Pond or in Oakview, because you could legally build smaller homes on those parcels. And that is, I'd say, a very, very important part of creating homes for younger families or people that are first starting into homeownership, and it's kind of been left out of this whole conversation because the question of attaching multiple units has sort of dominated the conversation. But that is only one exclusionary provision that was highlighted in the HRNA proposal. There are numerous provisions within there, some of which are not controversial at all, and I would like to see us move forward with it. And I worry that if we go back to the RSF 1 through 4 zoning categories, that that conversation will be unlikely, that will never happen. And I think there are easier ways, if the will of the commission is to protect single-family zoning, we could do it more quickly under different methods. That would still preserve some of the things that are uncontroversial, but I think are very thoughtfully put forward by staff.
You concur, Commissioner Chestnut?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Buck.
So, as it relates to Commissioner Eastman and the things and the proposals and the alternate information, this is probably going to be one of those examples, everybody's going to be dissecting day one and what happened, and there'll be media articles. I know I'm not going to read any media over the next 24 hours. I can't speak for my colleagues. But I will say that the information that Commissioner Eastman put in in at least two different areas today, and this means that he did some intensive study and research. I mean that very sincerely. And why that's important is because even though we may disagree and sometimes it's, you know, people count numbers, and I don't look at it as a, I think looking at any issue as a win-loss is a terrible way to look at anything, first off, because that means there was somebody who lost, and it's not that way, right, in real life. I will say that when I read the information that you put in, I thought, "This person has done their homework." So regardless of potential disagreement on there, it shows that you've got somebody who's doing some real work to make sure they understand the issues, and I just thought that was worth speaking to.
Thank you, Ed. I really appreciate that.
So just a couple of thoughts before we move on to the public. The process we've outlined here is that if this passes, if this motion passes, staff will generate a petition to go to the Plan Board to be heard, hopefully on January 26th, I think it's 26th, as soon as possible. And then, when, after they consider it, as soon as possible is the reality of it, when they consider it, the first reading of the ordinance comes back to this body. If there'll be discussion then and potential consideration then, if it passes on first reading, it comes back to us on second reading. I'm sorry, it goes to Tallahassee for approval or disapproval, and I am reasonably certain it would be quick. Then it comes back to us for a second reading, at which point we're looking at February or March, and realistically, right? Okay, into March, it's perfectly reasonable. And, which is actually what I've described to a whole lot of people last fall as being the likely process. And if it's approved on second reading at that point, then the code of ordinances regarding single-family zoning is exactly then what it was last September. And then we can have, my thought is, then we can have conversations about the pieces in it that are not controversial. That is, but that's speculation going forward. I just wanted to outline what the process would look like that we have, that is on the table right now, the motion that is on the table. So, Commissioner Duncan-Balger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Really briefly, I did, too, want to thank Commissioner Eastman for the thought that you've put into this. I am still very much prepared to move forward with the current motion that's on the table, but I did want to say this. This is a very exciting time in this commission because in just a few weeks, at an upcoming policy meeting, we will revisit the idea of an equitable development strategy. And so part of what I believe you're talking about may fall right into that. I'm very, very excited to come back from the holiday and see in my box some of the work that has gone into something that I put forward several months ago. And so as we start talking about this equitable development framework and how that does complement our comprehensive plan, I'm sure it's something that you're somewhat familiar with. It was a piece that was in GARE. And so that is potentially one way for us to begin to have those conversations about how we begin to live out equitable development in a very meaningful and thoughtful way. It does address some of the issues that you are outlining, Commissioner, and I wanted to thank you for your insight.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go to the public in just a moment. Two things first. You mentioned something, Commissioner Buck, that I think is really valuable that I'll bring back when we get to member comment, Commissioner comment at the end of the meeting. Several years ago, it's probably 2018, we did a half-day workshop for the commission to to, it was led by Mr. Persons, to help train us and help us understand planning and zoning, land use and zoning issues. That was incredibly useful to me, and I, I think everybody else on the commission who attended at that point found it very useful. And it, it puts us in a better position to understand the terminology and sift through these things in a, a more expeditious, knowledgeable way. So I'll be asking for that when we get to member comment, and I hope we'll get support on that. When we go to, to public comment in a moment, I would ask that, i- if you want to speak, you certainly get to speak. But if everybody's saying the same thing and is just looking to get a full three minutes out of it, you're welcome to do that, but we all got to be here until you're done. So, read between the lines there. So, all right. Madam Clerk, what do we have?
Robert Mounts.
It's my birthday. Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to ask for a couple of extra minutes to address this topic and the next one, because I've been waiting all afternoon, and this is one of those things where the commission could have made it easier on the public if they designated these issues for a time certain.
But we didn't, and, and we're, we're going to go with the three minutes. Let's roll.
All right. I'm Robert Mounts, and I've been with this subject for a long time, principally as a former president of the University Park Neighborhood Association, which is a neighborhood just north of the university. It's a family neighborhood centralized around what was J.G. Fenley and now Parker Elementary School. And our problems there were party houses and Airbnb, proliferation of Airbnbs, unsupervised residences where all kinds of bad things could happen, and code enforcement was necessary, and so forth. So for us, it's always been about preserving family neighborhoods. And as we work through this process, especially with GNV rise, we found allies in other neighborhoods close to the university, principally Porter's Quarters and Fifth Avenue Pleasant Street, where for various reasons, they're even more vulnerable than that northwest neighborhood, that affluent neighborhood there. And they became allies. And then with, during this past year, we drew allies in Isaiah Gardens and in East Gainesville, and, and historic black-dominated neighborhoods who also wanted to have a single-family district neighborhood preserved. And in one article last year, I wrote about the spirit, the search for equity, you know, and the irony that here we had a commission preaching what the, you know, the, the black community wants, but not listening to the black community representatives or to their neighborhood representatives on this issue. So it is very difficult to, to grasp all of that. But I'm a little concerned with passing it back to the Plan Board when it should be a simple repeal. You know, I don't understand the need for a new petition. I go back to the Plan Board. To me, that's just a way that proponents of the original idea can drag this out, perhaps change a few minds, and, you know, get it, some of it done. They can get what is the things that are noncontroversial done separately from this process. To me, that's the staff resisting this reversal process. And I, I urge you to just repeal it, repeal it, repeal it, and let's get it done.
Next.
Carrie Parker Warren.
I'm Carrie Parker Warren. I'm here again, and I am representing Azalea Trails and East Side of Gainesville. I don't want to go back 200 years. I probably want to go back a couple of months or two weeks ago. We are not in the yard or on the playground playing marbles with girls and boys and jumping hot, hopscotch. This is serious business, and we are serious about this. Of course, we want you to get along with the county commissioners. We want you to work with each other up there. But we cannot allow you to come your first day in this building to set policy and tell us what you want us to do. We're not going to, we're not going to do, to have you do that. We are going to fight. We are going to speak. We are going to let you know what we're thinking. We are going to let you know what we are feeling about this issue. We have gone through all this hullabaloo for a year, saying the same thing over and over again. And do, are there people that's listening? Yes, there are. Do we have friends up there? Yes, we do. Do we have, hopefully, the newcomers will be our friend. And if you are a friend, you're going to listen to us. You're going to listen to the people. We put you there. We pay your salary. We are human beings on the east side of town. We have invited all of you to visit the east side of town. Most of you have come, but we repeatedly invited some of the newcomers. They didn't even give us a telephone call. Well, on the east side of town, there are people that are irresponsible. There are people that are responsible. Same thing on the west side. Irresponsible people, responsible people. Father Fletcher said something today that really did hit me, and I hope you heard that. He says, "Serve the people in your grace." And when you don't listen to people, you're not serving the people in your grace. You're doing what you want to do. You can't tell us where to live, what to put on our side of town, because we're not going to listen. We're going to fight this. And you newcomers, we are welcoming you to this commission if you're going to listen to the people. Thank you for coming back, Commissioner Sacco. Thank you, other new people, for being here. But you have to listen to the people. Going through all this hullabaloo and all these things that you say we have to do, we've done it. We've done it. We've spoken, and we've spoken, and you're not listening. Thanks for being our friends on the east side. We are not trash. We don't want this in our community.
Ms. Parker Warren, I have to ask you to, to wrap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Fields.
Is Wayne here?
Aaron Green.
I'm Aaron Green, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I was elected to the City Commission in 1975, and I've followed the business of the City Commission since then as a member of the commission and just as a plain or regular citizen living in the Fifth Avenue neighborhood, community. This has been one of the most contentious issues that has ever confronted the City Commission in modern times. I recall reading an article written by Mr. Mount some months ago at the height of the controversy, where a vote was taken to move the ordinances on removing exclusionary zoning. And a commissioner was heard to exclaim, "I think we got the votes to do it." And I was just appalled by that remark on the part of a sitting commissioner, because it posed the question of the City Commission being at war with the community. And over 70% of the property owners who own single-family homes and single-family subdivisions oppose this. And without any reflection or consideration of that statistics, the City Commission passed this anyway. I support the repeal of what was passed and an expeditious enactment of the repeal, so we can go back to the status quo prior to October 15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Fitzgerald.
Good afternoon. Welcome, everybody. Glad to see all the smiling faces on the new commission. Again, my name is Casey Fitzgerald. I'm a longtime resident, resident of Gainesville, currently serve as the president of Gainesville Neighborhood Voices, a nonprofit, formed in response to both the existential threat to Gainesville's neighborhoods posed by what is hopefully going to be reversed, especially the risk that those pose to those areas most prone to gentrification. And equally importantly, we want to actually start working on meaningful, strategic, affordable housing for Gainesville in the future. I'll try to be brief. Our message is really quite simple. We are tremendously grateful and enthuse that item 2022-177 is on today's agenda with a recommendation for positive action. Moving forward expeditiously on this item, which we hope it could be faster, but there may be some legal, you know, issues to deal with. But moving as expeditiously as possible is very important, simply because of the looming administrative challenge in Tallahassee, and we do not want to pursue that if we don't have to any further. Perhaps, perhaps even more importantly, reversing this should also help avoid efforts that could emerge in Tallahassee to help undo these sorts of things. I mean, Tallahassee would love to undo some local government actions such as this and, you know, issue some more preemptive actions. Commissioner Eastman looked at your alternative motions, and as Commissioner Buck indicated, there's some good ideas in there. The issue is that I think the absolute vast majority of the testimony in the four months leading up to adoption of this was absolutely in opposition. And reinstating the single-family zoning is the reset that the community really needs. I mean, we need to reset at square one and come back with some good ideas and reinstate some of the issues that may have been in the ordinances that are currently in place. However, we just need to get back on course. Last time I was at this podium, I asked for a change of heart from one of the folks that was going to vote for this, to try to avoid this very process, but to no avail. But it is very heartening today to see that the ship can be put back on course. In closing, we encourage each of you to vote in support of the items as recommended. Again, I think this would start the community healing process, clearly save city staff and financial resources, and provide the opportunity to meaningfully address affordable housing sooner rather than later. So thank you very much for your consideration and positive action today. One final comment, I would suggest that the comp plan components that have not gone into effect may not have to go back to DCA or DEO, since they are not in effect. So I'd ask, you may ask the attorney to take a look at that issue. Again, thank you very much.
Hello. So I don't understand, Mayor Ward, you said that all of this has to go back to the Plan Board? That was not my understanding from Commissioner Chestnut's proposal.
That's what we do when we initiate a petition. It, it, so what this is, is, it is rebuilding the, the ordinance process. We pass the ordinance, to repat, to pass an ordinance that moves that backwards, you have to follow that procedure. And if we don't do that, I'll promise you, if we try some new and novel way, I promise you that there's going to be somebody who throws legal rocks back in the other direction. And what we want is a bulletproof procedure, right? I mean, we want it to work.
I, I, I understood something different from Mr. Ni that it was just, you know, get rid of the strike-throughs, get rid of the ads.
That's what, that's what the ordinance does.
And go back to zero. Well, then, so what would go before the Plan Board, the kinds of?
The new ordinance that we're sending back.
A new ordinance to... Do what? I mean, I...
It, 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 the new ordinance that we are talking about here, the petition.
Would be?
Would be to strike through the underlines and underline the strike-throughs in the previous ordinance that was passed.
Why does that?
So that, so what this will do is give us a tried and true procedure that we've done over and over and over, hundreds if not thousands of times, that we know is legally defensible, that gets us, when it's done, back to exactly where we started in September.
I don't understand why it has to go back to the Plan Board.
If, because that's the process of moving a petition. If we don't do that, we could try this other way, but it's gamble. And I don't think you want us to gamble with this.
Well, I mean, everything that could be said about this has been said. I think Commissioner Chestnut is exactly right on. We've spent a year. Carrie Parker Warren, same thing, you know, you know, I just don't see us dragging it back through. And as far as people not understanding the issues, well, that's on them. If they don't understand the issues, because they've had plentiful opportunity to. And, you know, some of the other things can come back, but, you know, why weren't these alternatives brought up at the time everybody was, was freaking out over, you know, getting rid of, of single-family zoning? And, you know, the, the corporatization of real estate that has really accelerated and exploded in the past two or three years is very dangerous. And that is what some of these changes lead to. There already are ways to split lots. There are already ways to, you know, reduce setbacks or whatever, without inviting deregulate, further deregulation. Zoning is not the problem, and upzoning is not a solution. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Peggy Carr.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I wanted to congratulate you particularly, Mr. Mayor, on your speech this morning. It was really inspiring. So, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to, to talk. I fully support the motion that has been made by Commissioner Chestnut. I would just like for there to be one clarification, and that is that, as Mr. Ni suggested, that the DOA hearings be held in abeyance until we've had a time for this whole process to work. And then I'm not sure that that was originally included in your motion. So I just wanted to be sure that that was the case. As one of the petitioners, I absolutely would rather not have to testify in a DOA hearing, and hopefully that won't happen. So thank you all very much, and I hope very much you'll support Commissioner Chestnut's motion.
Thank you. So before we go, Commissioner Chestnut, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier. Do you, is this specific about this? Do you want to get?
I just wanted to address Ms. Silva's issue with the Plan Board, and how important it is for us to follow that process. If you recall, though, the Plan Board did not support the ordinance when it came before them, and the City Commission is not bound to take the Plan Board's recommendation. And I want to make that clear. It is an advisory opinion, and then we can decide whether or not we want to accept it or not. So if the Plan Board were to have a change of heart and come back with something different, it doesn't mean that we would have to accept that. Thank you.
And Commissioner Chestnut, you wanted to add?
And I want to add to the motion on the floor to include the, the DOA hearing and the, let's see, I don't see. Do I want the DOA hearing and the, the citizens?
Yeah, I understand.
Would you address it?
Generally, I would say it's outside the role of the commission to give us direction as to how to conduct ongoing litigation like that. But that's why I wanted to represent to you, though, that I do think that, again, as officers of the court, we are obliged to, if we are defending, and we have been aggressively, zealously defending the decisions of this commission on these, these ordinances from October, that we're obliged to tell the other parties and to tell the hearing officer, if that intention has changed, we will tell them that, and we will tell them that it's the interest of everyone's resources, the cities, the petitioners, the Department of Administrative Hearings, the state of Florida, the county, who's all, who all have all been involved, to, to hold this in abeyance. Because if this process goes through and the ordinances, new ordinances are passed, that would essentially undo these, that would not more than essentially, that would actually undo these ordinances, then these resources, that all becomes moot. So it is something that we will do, and I'm really sort of informing you that if this motion passes, we will notify those other parties expeditiously and the DOA hearing officer, and ask that they hold things in abeyance. It will be up to the hearing officer to actually do that or not, but I can't fathom why they wouldn't, why you wouldn't.
That takes care of what?
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Who's up next?
Thank you, Commissioners, and I support Commissioner Chestnut's motion, as you might expect. I'd like to address one thing that Commissioner Eastman said, which is that I do not believe the city code has a minimum size of houses. You might be thinking about your own neighborhood's restrictive covenants or minimums in the Florida Building Code, but so far as I know, that doesn't exist. Similarly, lot splits are already allowed by the city code. It's just the size of them and how far you can further split lots. So I think that going back to square one and starting again, and then strategically making changes that will actually impact affordable housing is what's important. I want to mention that there were three people who spoke about affordable housing today, one in the context of the perennially unhoused, one in the context of someone whose rent had gone up, and her full letter had, from her landlord, which she shared on Facebook, her landlord blamed city changes for her rent going up. Whether that's true or not, the cost of the new recycling program was one of the things her landlord specifically mentioned. The third person who spoke about a lack of affordable housing was a young man who's concerned he won't be able to buy a house. When I was his age, I don't think I was even thinking about buying a house, but this would not solve any of those problems. If we want to help our younger people buy homes if they want to, if we want to help the perennially unhoused, if we want to stabilize rents in our community, there are lots of things that we can do as a community. Some of them have to do with construction, but a lot have to do with things that are unrelated to construction, that are other systemic problems. And I hope that we'll look forward to those as a community, and that you'll draw on the expertise of all of the people in this room and others who know a lot about these subjects. So I hope that you'll vote expeditiously to repeal this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy New Year, and welcome for the new commission. And the old commission to come back too, for the New Year. I support Commissioner Chestnut's motion to rescind the ordinance, not only to respect the voice of the people, but to avoid the related litigation from the community and the state and the county that oppose this. And as was pointed out, the Plan Board also opposes this. So one thing about bringing it back to the Plan Board, it strikes me that the state instructed the city to withdraw the original plan amendment. So if the state has instructed the city to not go forward with this, I'm not sure why it would have to go back to the Plan Board in this particular instance. So that's something to think about. Also, I think the Department of Transportation came out against it, along with, I forgot a couple of other agencies. So anyway, I think maybe if you think about it in that light, I don't think that we would be violating any procedures, particularly in light of the original Plan Board did vote against it. I don't remember too many people being in for this, as a matter of fact. And as far as having to explore, it was suggested by the new Commissioner Eastman that this needs to be, hasn't been looked at well enough. I think that's been pretty well established, that unless you're hiding under a rock for the last several months, you knew all about this issue. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Hello, once again. I support Commissioner Chestnut's motion. This needs to be a clean reversal. The community, ninety percent or more of all the comments that were made at every public event were against it. You have heard from all the people in your runnings, and that is, your answers are the majority reason why most of you sitting here, who are new. All the ideas weren't bad, and we never said they were all bad. We said the blanket for the ideas to go all over the city all at once was bad. And so we need to go back to what we had, and then go and say, okay, where does this part make sense? Where does this part make sense? So, Mr. Eastman, we hear you, and I would love for you to bring some of those things in the future with community engagement, because that was the other part that was missing. Bring us to the table before you try and shove something down our throats that we don't want. And so, can we go back to where we were, then bring the community together, and then we can look and see what makes sense and where? The main difference, what I would like to see from this new sitting commission, is to actually listen here and act based on what you're getting from the community, and not just what you think is best, because that was not the right approach. So, thank you. I gotta go. It was lovely spending all day with you, but I got kids to pick up.
Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, and congratulations again to Willetts, Ward, Eastman, and Book. And that's no particular order, it's just backwards alphabetically. I am so glad to see this move coming. I was hoping for it and anticipating it, and you are right to reverse the misdirection of the past commission, who I think thought they were correcting past discrimination and creating affordable housing. And exclusionary zoning in the past did create our separate housing pattern and some other problems with supply, but it doesn't solve that easily. I hope that now that we can get past exclusionary, we can move toward inclusionary expeditiously, and get some units built. That's the whole, you-know-what point, is get some units built. And everything else is just distraction. Now, I know at some levels in the federal government, I know it's at the presidential level, I don't know if it applies in the state of Florida. For instance, an incoming president can instantly overturn anything his predecessor did, and I think it's the last thirty days or the last sixty days of office, by as far as decrees. So maybe there's something we've overlooked in state law that allows a new governing body to deal with the late actions of the previous body. Please check into that.
Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and new Commissioners. Congratulations, and we look forward to you working with us, the community. I rise to support the motion of Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut. For the new Commissioners, we have been coming here for over a year addressing the same issue. Why are we wasting yours' time and the citizens? You know where the citizens stand. The Commissioners who voted for this back in October, they're all gone. We are hoping that you all will bring a new breath of life. And as my pastor was speaking Sunday, we need to move forward. We need to move forward. We don't need to go back to the Plan Board or any of those things. The state rejected this. The citizens, more importantly, rejected it. So why should we have to go back to Plan Board? And they rejected it. So let's move forward, and please, I urge you to support the motion by Commissioners Chestnut. I hope that you will, and all the other things that Commissioner Eastman had written up in his plan. We'll discuss that on another day at another time. But we know exactly the direction we want to go in. So we are asking you to please support the motion by Commissioner Chestnut. Thank you, and I hope we have a very productive commission for the next four years, because the last four has been nothing but chaos. You know, we hated, I hated to come here, because it was always out of hand. It was a mess. You are, we elected you, you're all intelligent people. We elected you because we thought that you would listen to the concerns of the people that elected you. That's all we are asking of you. Thank you, and good luck to all of you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Joe Beatty.
Do you want to call up the next person in line so they can be ready?
If you'd let us just come up like we used to, just when we felt like it, I wouldn't have been first all the time, and I might not have always spoken. First of all, Commissioner Eastman, I appreciate your thoughts and your input. I'd like to thank all of you, Commissioner Eastman, Chestnut, Desmond Duncan Walker, Mayor Ward, Commissioner Willetts, and Commissioner Book, for something I haven't really seen in this chamber for a long time. You all seem to be paying attention to the citizens and really taking in what they have to say. I'm not gonna go over what anybody else said. I just wanted to comment that, not dismissing Commissioner Chestnut's comment about degenerational wealth as it affects the black community, I also want to say that I heard from all communities that the ordinance that was just passed was going to destroy lots of neighborhoods and the neighborhood integrity. So almost equally important, and that's just something that nobody's mentioned today. Otherwise, I support all the comments, and I appreciate this motion and the fact, hopefully you'll even make it unanimous, even though it's not what you want today, Commissioner Eastman. I think we'll have a level playing field, and as others before me have said, we'll start building back better. Thank you very much.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we actually have another...
Sure.
Fay Williams.
Good afternoon, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, all of that. It is a new year, 2023. As you know, Mayor Ward, I did not vote for you. However, you are a mayor, and I look forward to having a relationship, a positive relationship with you, where we can sit down and be able to listen to each other, talk with each other, and hopefully agree on a few things. I considered you a friend before. You made some big mistakes with the votes, and I fell out of friends with you. But I'm trying to wrap my arms around you, and hopefully become friends again.
All right.
But I want you to be able to listen to me as well as my community, because we felt like we would not listen to you as well as you other City Commissioners. I want to stand and support Commissioner Chestnut. Thank you very much for continuing the struggle, because there has been the struggle, especially last year. Thank you, Desmond, for always being on point. And I definitely want to thank our new City Commissioner Book, because he made it real clear that when he messes up, we have the authority to tell him you messed up, Ed. And I ain't planning to tell you that. I'm coming after you when you mess up. I don't need to talk about, you know, while we're all still here, I just want to say we instate single-family housing. It's real clear that it's needed. We brought so many people here, we used the phone, we sent emails, we did whatever we could to try to stop it, but it passed. I don't want to even discuss what Eastman has put on the table, because it creates additional problems. I'm hoping that we can move forward, and one of the ways to move forward is to show support for this motion and make it happen the right way. The other thing I want to say is that Black history is right around the corner. Martin Luther King's birthday is coming up, and guess what? It's also my birthday. I was born on the same day as Martin Luther King, not the same year, the same day. And I want to invite all the City Commissioners, including you, Eastman, to come down so you can hear the words of Martin Luther King, the radical words of Martin Luther King. We act like we love Martin Luther King, and he was a dreamer, and we want to hold hands, we want to sing, you know, the good songs, but Martin Luther King was as radical as a few other radical people. And we need that kind of radicalism within Gainesville to make some serious changes. We need affordable housing, and it means that we got to stop some things, and then we got to move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, anyone else? Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that our record included, by my count, at least twenty-four emails that opposed the motion on the floor, and that wanted the previous commission's decision to stay on the books. Those twenty-four voices obviously can't afford to spend hours here, they have jobs, they're younger, they're disadvantaged, and they couldn't be here, but they wrote. They spent that time writing in to let us know they don't support this, that they would like to one day live to have a home. And I think the reason we all think about it now is because it is such a looming impossibility for so many that, of course, we think about it in our twenties and thirties. So I just want to make sure that does get noted on the record, that this isn't a hundred percent against or for, that there are many people on both sides of this, and that those voices did email in. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Willetts.
Specifically, I want to add to Commissioner Sacco's point, the new website, How Public Comment Comes In Day of, on each individual item, it is a two-for-one in against of Commissioner Chestnut's motion. And that really is about who's in the room, who's being listened to, whose voices have already been made so small that they don't dare speak up. As a commissioner who was elected in District Three, that is literally probably ninety percent multifamily, ninety percent renters, though Commissioner Sacco, Commissioner Chestnut, and the mayor represent everybody in town, I represent arguably the center of renters, the center of multifamily. I'm forty now, when I was thirty-nine, I finally bought my first home, but otherwise I was a renter in this town for seven years. The voices we don't hear all too often are renters. I want to make that known, that they are not in this room, they are not speaking, they're on their emails though, they're on the public comments. And when I went door-to-door with renters, this was not the issue that was most important. GRU, obviously, this summer, right? It was hot. That was the issue that came up over and over and over again, with a myriad of other issues of why people love Gainesville. This was not the issue on their minds. And when I did get into it, they came along when I described that how when there's limited land and there's high demand and high opportunity neighborhoods, smaller and even placed on top of each other, homes, or how working-class people outbid the wealthy for land in the places they need to be, close to schools, services, close to where they work, where they need to buy groceries. The only way typically that the working class have been able to outbid the wealthy, and that's what this is, is they take a slightly smaller carve out of our city, they accept it, and they get to be where they need to be and where they want to be. I don't want things, you know, this isn't for me to give an entire hour-long speech on zoning. Zoning is not new to me. I have a degree in geography, I learned about Ucun versus Ambler as a twenty-year-old or twenty-one-year-old. That is the court case in nineteen twenty-six about zoning. Zoning did not come up, really, residential exclusionary zoning didn't come up until after racial zoning had been legalized. zoning had been legalized by, banned by the Supreme Court. But by 1926 in Yucca versus Ambler, it was really clear that people wanted to, you know, there was already all this zoning happening all across the country. That's where we got, you know, the approval, the go-ahead from the Supreme Court. And in that case, they very clearly called apartments parasites on the community. The people I represent in southwest Gainesville are not parasites. They don't live in parasitical housing. My home, that is multifamily, which is far larger than a quad, quadplex, where, I think, 90 units on five acres. I think we're 17 units per acre. It is not a parasite on the community wherever it exists. When we talk about this having been a blanket, 65% of the city residential areas, my home is illegal in, and 90% of the homes of my constituents are illegal in. Conveniently, the someplace else that we talk about is in my district. Put it someplace else, somewhere else, somewhere else. It's in my district. So I come here representing, absolutely representing the people. Those people are in my district in southwest Gainesville. They're young. They're renters. They're not even, you know, they're, they're citizens of other countries. They're graduate students. They're recently divorces. They're recently widowed. They're recently retired. Where they can find something to live is often in, in my district. That's why I'm proud to represent southwest Gainesville because I was a renter for seven years. I still vividly, vividly remember that. The good things that are arguably, that some have said, there are some good things in this ordinance that would be, could be saved or ought to be saved. I frankly do not trust that we will be able to save those unless we go down a route that is more similar to what Commissioner Eastman has suggested because my experience with zoning, and this is, I'm not making this up, zoning has always been about economic segregation and 100% residential zoning within the types, has always been about economic segregation. There's nothing that is going to change that. And so lot splits, which were often part of zoning, it's economic segregation, setbacks, minimum area far is what it's called in some places. It's about economic segregation, economic zoning. So I, I very much fear that we are going down a road where we say we're going to go back and talk about those things. But I'm sure when we go back and talk about those things, suddenly, yes, we will have to drag it through the mud for years. So, the original motion is, is one I cannot stomach. A possible alternate motion, I really do appreciate, Commissioner, for one, for Commissioner Eastman, for bringing something that, that could, could hold on to some of the things that, like you said, do affect the entry-level housing for families or, or even single people that are currently hard or impossible to vote, not currently, previously before October 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, without saying any other lights here, we'll move to, to vote. And this is a direction. This is not the ordinance, so it is a voice vote and not, not a roll call. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So that's, that passes four to three with Willetts, Sacco, and Eastman in, in dissent. Now, what, we'll take up the, the next item, and then we will take 15 minutes to stretch our legs. And the lesson I've learned today is that I will never again declare that we're not going to have an evening session. Madam Clerk?
The next item is item number 2022-178. Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut, allow up to one accessory dwelling unit per lot and require owner occupancy with the recommendation that the City Commission refer the Land Development Code amendments as outlined in the item report to the City Plan Board for consideration at its January 26, 2023 meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Commission adopted ordinance 190988 on September 3, 2020. I believe that was about at 11:30 at night. That ordinance changed city laws governing accessory dwelling units, including exempting accessory dwelling units from density standards and allowing two accessory dwelling units per lot are parcel. This motion refers to the City Plan Board allowing one accessory dwelling unit per lot and requiring accessory dwelling units to meet the applicable density standards.
And that's a motion?
That's the motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might. Andrew Persons is here. I'd like to ask Andrew, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, to just come forward and talk about the impact that this may have on some of the current programs that we have going through our housing program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Persons, special advisor to the city manager.
Welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody, new and, and returning. So the manager is referring to, if you recall, the City Commission recently approved allocation through Home ARP, and in that is a, an accessory dwelling unit program. The city HCD staff, sorry, Housing Community Development staff is looking at about five lots in the city to develop with accessory dwelling units. And, and what we are looking at right now, because the Home ARP money is specifically designated for rent, for renters, there's no owner occupied or, or, or for sale with that, that may jeopardize what the commission has, has done if the commission decided to, to have that. So that would require us to potentially talk to HUD and, you know, roll that back. So, just something to think about.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Are there any other comments on this board?
Then I'd like to withdraw this at this time and get with staff. I wish staff had gotten with me prior to today on this. But I will withdraw it and, and work with them on it.
And you draw the second as well?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Book?
Thanks for withdrawing the motion. I just wondered if we could also have, if the next time that this is agended, some of the data on which particular units and where in the city this is particularly impacted. And that's in addition to what, what Mr. Persons brought for us because I'm guessing that since 2020, there's probably been some people that have availed themselves under this particular ordinance. So having that hard data will be very helpful.
Well, actually, we've asked for that data before.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If Mr. Persons could, while we're looking for data, would we be able, because we know where these properties are and where the applications have been, the program's about two years old now, give or take?
Correct.
Once we, once we legalized it.
Right.
Yeah, I was here for it, so about two years. Would it be possible to get any police data relating to, you know, if there has been police activity or the police have been called to those properties, if code enforcement has been called to those properties? I really want to see data showing that this is detrimental to the community. And in the absence of that, then, you know, we don't have any. But I think we have about maybe three dozen, give or take?
Yes, and that's what I wanted to, to, to point out, Mr. Mayor. We, we have that data. We've provided it to the commissions, actually, in your affordable housing framework, where we've done mapping, both of, we use GIS analysis to map existing accessory dwelling units, ones that had been, you know, been in place for a very, very long time, as well as pulling permit information from our permitting system, which we have, as Commissioner Sacco indicated, roughly about three dozen or so, 36 applications since 2020 that, that have availed themselves of the, the existing ordinance. And we're happy to pull any data that the commission feels is appropriate.
If you may, Mr. Person, just to kind of repackage that, because if I have to go back into the whole framework, it'll be a while.
Sure.
And any updates that might be necessary, just, just let us know.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, I, I will say, well, you know, we're, we've drawn the motion, so we're, yeah. Okay. All right. So, let's take 15, let's come back at 5:55, and we've got three or four more items as well as a member comment ahead of us, and we'll, we'll finish up at that point. Thank you.
Never mind, we have three minutes left. Sorry, my bad, my bad.
Session, Madam Clerk.
The next item is item number 2022-772, Bid Award and Cooperative Purchasing Contract Authorization for Forest Park Improvements, with the recommendation that the City Commission award the bid to Blackwater Construction Services LLC for the construction of the Forest Park Improvement Project and authorize the city to enter into a cooperative purchasing contract with NGU Sports Lighting LLC to purchase sports lighting via owner-direct purchase for Forest Park and authorize the city manager or designee to execute all contract documents and other necessary documents subject to approval by the city attorney as to form legality.
Madam Manager, is there a presentation for this?
Yes, sir. Betsy Wade is here from the Wild Spaces Public Places Program. This is a major construction award out of our Wild Spaces Public Places funding source, and I'd like for Ms. Wade to come forward, please, and just elaborate on it.
Happy New Year, Ms. Wade.
Happy New Year. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. It's great to see some new faces on the commission this evening in the dais. So I'm Betsy Wade, City of Gainesville, Wild Spaces and Public Places, under the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. And so I have the honor of bringing you what I think is a really exciting project to kick off the new year. And so this is a conceptual rendering, so I thought it'd be easier to kind of show you, yeah, kind of what future improvements you're going to see at Forest Park. Our goal is to kick off construction in the coming months. So we're going to be completely changing the drainage at Forest Park for the soccer fields that once flooded, really were not ideal conditions. The City of Gainesville received Forest Park from the community through annexation in 2017. And so we know that this park is heavily used by Gainesville Regional Soccer League and other entities. Like this is kind of the soccer hub in Gainesville right now, and it is due for a holistic overhaul of the site. So what we envision is, you know, we're going to be improving the drainage on the three main soccer fields, bringing up the elevation, re-contering the fields to make them just kind of standard pitches and elevations so water can actually sheet flow off of those soccer fields. We're also going to get one additional two-thirds size soccer field that you can see here. So it's going to kind of be on the north end of the project location. And so that's going to be an opportunity to have that smaller field for older adults to play and also youth. So really increasing the utilization of the space by going from three fields to four. I think it's going to have a lot of benefit for the community. And then all of the fields are going to be lit, which we're really excited about. So to have that opportunity to play in the evening, in the summer months, or just to have a wider range of hours of use in general, and with brand-new turf and improved irrigation, these are going to be really, really nice soccer fields. You're going to have new bleachers with shade structures over top of them. So definitely like the bells and whistles, this is going to be a premier soccer hub for Gainesville, which we do not currently have, or at least not within the City of Gainesville's amenities. So we're also going to be improving the existing basketball courts. They're going to be getting some new surfacing, and also they will be lit. In addition, we'll also have lit volleyball courts adjacent to the basketball courts. One exciting element we're looking at is having pickleball striping on the basketball courts. So we will have portable nets that will be controlled by the pickleball club. And so we're trying to increase the flexibility and make those dual-purpose because we see pickleball players tend to be maybe earlier in the morning for retirees. Basketball could be kind of in the afternoons and evenings. So I think we could increase the utilization of those basketball courts. So that's what we'll be moving forward with there. We've got two brand-new stand volleyball courts that will be modern, so that will be appreciated by those users. And we're also going to have an additional dog park. So the dog park is going to be redesigned, and we're going to have a second dog park. So if one park gets, I mean, dog parks are just hard to maintain because if you have ever had multiple dogs in your yard at home, also very much a challenge. So anyway, having two dog parks at that location will let us help to rebuild the turf. We do maintenance on one and keep the other one open, so giving us a lot more flexibility for the space. Let me see if I missed anything. Oh, I wanted to go over what an owner-direct purchase is. There was a question earlier this afternoon, a little confusion. So the city, we're proposing to do an owner-direct purchase of these sports lights from NGU Sports Lighting, and that saves us on tax money. So by not having to pay sales tax, we're going to save over $50,000. So by doing that direct purchase versus having that equipment purchased under our general contractor, we're realizing those tax savings, so that's why we're doing this. Oh, also wanted to mention, so this project, so we were awarded a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant in the amount of $200,000. So we're going to be reimbursed $200,000 for these park improvements. So with that, I am available for any questions you have.
Mr. Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Betsy, for this presentation. This is exciting. I've been hearing a lot from many of my constituents and a lot of people throughout the city about pickleball. Right, right, and signed into my email account the other day, and out of nowhere came an ad, pickleball. So this is exciting. Apparently, it's all the new craze. I do have a question that I'm not sure whether the city manager will best feel this or whether it might be Zariah. We now have some access to some really sizable pots of money, and I am curious about our procurement process and how we are ensuring equity and making sure. Because this is, you know, it's a nice little bit of change. And before, a few years ago, before this current commission, obviously, and maybe even, well, during the last one, I believe it was, there was a specific evening in which racial equity was addressed, and there were some things that were highlighted in our procurement process where we could do better. I'm curious, I don't know that that has come back, if someone could refresh my memory, because if not in this project, I know that moving forward, I will certainly be interested in how we begin to pay more attention to that, making sure that we live out our mission and our goal to make sure that funds are equitably dispersed amongst different vendors who come to us.
I will address it, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'd like to confer with Zariah Folsen, he's not here. What I'd really like to do, and I will do it because I think it's the right thing to do, is probably put a checklist or something with these items that come to the commission that a purchase base, Mr. Folsen is here. I'm not prepared to answer your question in a way that I'm satisfied with. And so therefore, I'd like to work with Mr. Folsen to incorporate a situation or a scenario where when these purchasing or procurement items come up, whether they're construction or goods or services, that there is a checklist next to it that basically gives not only us, but gives the commission the satisfaction that we have gone through the necessary steps to make sure that vendors, small businesses, et cetera, have had an opportunity to review and decide to or not to participate.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that, Madam Curry. I definitely look forward to that, and I look forward to how you will work with Mr. Folsen to bring that to fruition. Thank you.
Mr. Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Betsy. So fun fact, I actually had the honor of living very nearby, within walking distance, and it's my walking distance, which is about three minutes of this park. And it may be sad that it wasn't lit. And so hearing that it is going to have lights, that it's going to be renovated to this extent just makes me so happy because I lived around so many young families and other young people who wanted a place to go. So knowing that we are putting a generous gift from the voters to projects like this, just completely, my heart is growing three sizes too big. But I am excited, and I think it'd been mentioned before by Commissioner Ariel in the past, although I don't think it applies right now, if I remember the map right. District Three's parks were often not addressed as well, or were limited compared to other districts, and how many we had and how they were facilitated. So seeing this here, seeing that it is going to be a complete total makeover and enhancement, makes me so incredibly happy. I do have one question. As far as the courts, as far as like all the spaces, how, again, I'm not a sports person, so maybe that's why I don't know. How multifunctional and/or, I guess, repurposable, repurposable? Would they be for other events that aren't necessarily soccer or the sports that they're set up for?
Commissioner Sacco, the soccer fields could be restriped for additional uses. So I think that's definitely something that could be considered. I know the city kind of adopted a contract with Gainesville Regional Soccer League where they have kind of the first rights to use those fields. So we could, you know, in the coming years, look at kind of renegotiating that or taking a broader look at other entities potentially to broaden some of those uses.
And I think you mentioned some bleachers and them being covered. So as far as like those sitting structures, not like the restriping portions, it's workable. Like it could be repurposed to, it could be adapted to other uses as needed. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chestnut.
Thank you. I want to go back to Commissioner Duncan Walker's question or proposal. We, I brought this issue to the commission back in July, June or July, on W- women business enterprises and minority business enterprises. And this is something that, and there's a third category that is in it now, but it's MBEs, WBEs, and the third category. And so as you're researching this, if you will go back to that original referral, there he is, and incorporate it, but I think my referral was in June or July.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Zariah Folsen, Intern Director for the Office of Equity and Inclusion. You are correct, this came back to the commission last fall-ish when we talked about this. And so small business staff, along with procurement staff, have been getting together some strategies and ways that they've already started collaborating together on this specific project. I will find out to answer what level of collaboration we have for this specific project, because I'm not sure for this specific project. But they have already been meeting and strategized, and they've already incorporated some of the things that you guys have asked them to implement in terms of how they service small business collaboratively. That's not only just for the sake of those that are listening, not just for GG Departments, but it has also been, GRU has also been involved in terms of their procurement staff as well. For those that may not know, GG and GRU both have procurement staffs, and they both have been partnering with the Office of Equity and Inclusion and our Small Business Era to make sure that we are more inclusive of small businesses in general at large. At this time, for those that are listening as well, the commissioners are aware of this. Our small business, Army City Gainesville, is gender neutral and race neutral. So when we say small business, that just means small business. So know that as well, but they have been collaborating. But I will find out in detail specifically to this project, what were the steps that we played a part in. And if we didn't play a part, I'll highlight areas that we should be playing a part in in the future, along with the manager as we look at reviewing it.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Yu, I might come back, but we'll get a little bit.
Uh, are you finished, Commissioner Chestnut, or did you? Commissioner Willis.
Um, first, easy question. There's, is there any, um, children's playground equipment in this park update?
No, Commissioner Willis, there, there will not be.
I don't, I don't believe there is any children's park equipment in entire District Three that is owned by the city. Um, and so I was, uh, that's why I was, I didn't know whether that was involved. I, I, this is in District Three indeed, and I'm so thrilled to see this. I talked to voters a lot about what we didn't see in, in District Three, and Parks was one of it. This is the, basically the lone park in District Three and, uh, as evidenced by the fact that we are about to spend a very large portion of, of our available funds on it, it is, it is in need of, um, some desperate maintenance upkeep and improvement. Uh, the lighting is very, very exciting because Southwest Gainesville District is pretty young, pretty student oriented, and a lot of their, um, recreation, as I've learned, is not nine to five. Um, and so the idea that it would be lit at night for the summers, or even in the winter, you know, six o'clock at night, this is, uh, very exciting. Um, it, it seems like it does not change so much the type of the park, but truly the quality of it. Um, and the dog parks are something that was mentioned over and over again with my, with, uh, voters I talked to. They may have had dog park at their, their apartment, but, um, they really wanted to, they weren't just walking their dog to use the restroom, they really wanted to go out with their dog and have fun in a park. Um, so this is very, very exciting to see. Um, I hope we can get some more parks in Southwest Gainesville and in District Three, but this is, uh, going a long ways to showing, uh, that park development is a little more equitably spread across the geography of our city. Thank you.
Commissioner Book.
I agree with Commissioner Sacco and Commissioner Willis about the excitement of this particular project. Uh, just as a, um, citizen looking at Wild Spaces Public Places, over the last, I don't know, several years, I think it operates at peak efficiency, meaning this is a, an organization and, and a piece of what has been done very, very well in city and county government in, in collaboration. And I know you're a huge piece of that because you were the first director, is director the, the right term?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and had the pleasure of actually working on the Northside Park, uh, project. Uh, one question that you probably had answered here, I just didn't see it, um, and it may be just because we had too much backup, was what's, what's the timeline for the project?
Uh, so Commissioner Book, we are looking to start construction as soon as possible. I mean, now it takes a handful of weeks to execute a contract, um, to get the bond recorded and to kind of get some of that preliminary work set up. Um, but I'm hopeful sometime in maybe mid to late February would be ambitious, um, but that's what we're striving to achieve and the goal is to finish this renovation in the fall. So we need a large window of opportunity to grow in and resprig all of the fields. That's like a 16-week undertaking in just that one task, uh, so we really need to kick off construction pretty soon.
Big project, fast. Um, and you said that the bleachers would be covered?
They will be, yep. They'll have shade sails over top. Yeah, and, um, there's one additional feature I forgot to mention for those people who love the dog park. Uh, so we're going to try a dog wash station at this park. So if you want to wash your dog, this could be a great opportunity.
Okay, well, I don't want to wash my dog. My dog stays home. Uh, the, the last thing I'll just say is as a lifelong racquetball player, anybody who needs a pickleball tutorial at this lengthy piece of wood here, I'll be happy to provide it at any point. And, uh, thanks.
Uh, thank you for, for this and, uh, Madam Manager, thank you as well. Uh, Commissioner Chestnut, thank you for suggesting that we, we pull this off because I think this is a very useful conversation and, and important for us to, to be able to discuss. Uh, I know that, um, I, I, I'm not sure where he is, but somewhere David or Ariel is very, very happy right now, so. Um, I, uh, I, yeah, there, there's a lot I could say about this, I'm very pleased with it. It's, uh, good, good to see this moving forward. I'll remind everyone that we inherited this park from the county when we annexed many, many years ago at this point, and it's just kind of been there ever since. So to see it worked is, is, is important. Uh, we had a conversation two years ago, maybe more, um, about, I think we actually passed a, a motion unanimously to, to look into the idea of changing the name of this park, um, to something like Olympic Park or Olympian Park and putting some sort of, um, recognition of all the Olympians who are, uh, who come through Gainesville. We have a, for a city our size, we have an enormous number of Olympians who have lived in, in our community because of UF. But people mostly don't know that until they run the articles every Olympics on, in, in the Sun. Um, we'll revisit that at some point, I hope, but, but I, I think recognition of that sort of thing would be useful and helpful and give some more community pride to parks like this. And Forest Park is an intriguing name for this. I'm not sure that it's, it's particularly accurate, given that it's, you know, in, um, cheek to jowl with Baller Plaza, but that, that's okay. Um, there's a little forest there, you're right, it, it's probably more of a wetland, but, um, anyway, thank you so much. Let's hear from the public and, uh, hopefully somebody will make a motion. Anybody, uh, signed up to talk to this?
Joe Beatty?
That's it? Okay. Uh, Commissioner, do you want to make this motion for the?
I'd like the motion, it's my first motion, I'm sorry.
All right.
I'd like the motion that we, I move the adoption of, oh, that's right.
Just read that.
That the city commission award the bid to Blackwater Construction Services for the construction of the Forest Park Improvement Project and authorize the city to enter into cooperative purchase contract with NGU Sports Lighting LLC to purchase sports lighting via owner direct purchase, which we discussed, for Forest Park and authorize the city manager or designated to execute all contract documents and other necessary documents subject to approval by the city attorney as to form and legality.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, uh, to follow staff recommendation on this item. Uh, any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the next one.
The next item is item number 2023 dash zero nine. Commissioner Ed Book, discussion item, written community input procedure with the recommendation that the city commission invite the community to submit written feedback.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. So using a, a football analogy, you're only the Super Bowl champion on the day you win the Super Bowl. And why that's really important is, we last had some protocol about the way that we have community input, um, via some processes. The mayor spoke quite a bit about it and I appreciated you providing that explanation at the very beginning of the meeting, how many minutes you can speak, how you provide an input card, um, that, what you can speak to. And I think those things are always, every so often, for the ability for us as a, um, unified body to improve, this is that opportunity to improve. And it, it just so happens that the, um, the charters and the mayor have put a city retreat on, for us a week from tomorrow. And one of the things that we'd like to do is compile any information from anybody about those particular protocols on how we engage. And this is more related to the DIES, right? We know people can call in, you can email, uh, you can provide information directly to, I think, any one of us or through the charters or city staff. Um, but it is a good time to take a look and see, uh, are there ways that we can improve? And if there are, then that's what we would do, because that's what a good elected body would do. Uh, Madam Clerk has already, um, taken the responsibility of compiling things and I know that people look at those agendas online because I've already had two people call and say, I see this on the commission agenda, let me tell you what I think. And I said, no problem, you can email me, but even if you don't, I'm going to capture that in writing in notes, uh, for the body. So, um, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Book for bringing this forward. This is certainly, uh, a conversation and discussion that I'm looking forward to having, so.
Thank you for this. Um, and also thank you, I believe, for mentioning that the charters and the mayor came up with the date. Is that what you said?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So that's my question. Um, because I think this is so meaningful and so worthwhile, um, I'm curious as to whether staff and the mayor might even consider pushing it out, and there's a reason I'm saying that. And I'm open. I want to have this discussion, but I also want it to be robust and I want to make sure that we've had ample time to notify people. So do we think that this week, from today to the 13th, is enough time to make people aware of this conversation? Because I, I think if we really do this right, we can do meaningful community engagement and we can get the type of input that we really desire. I want this to be meaningful for everybody. So what, I, and I want to hear, I'm not saying that I think it is or it is, well, to be honest, I don't think there's enough time. I really don't. But it may be. It could be. I, I think we also have at our disposal, um, a brand new team member in our marketing director, who is a brilliant young woman who I had the chance to meet earlier today and she shared with me some of her experiences. And it may be worthwhile to give her the opportunity to market this for us. So I wanted to throw that out there, um, give you all my colleagues an opportunity to share your thoughts as to whether or not, and then certainly since I have just heard that, Mr. Mayor, you were a part of the decision-making on this, I don't want to step on what your thought process was here, but I'd like to know what it is and to hear from everybody about considering, making sure that we advertise this in a way that we let enough people know about it.
So, thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. The, uh, the initial idea for this entire workshop was for us to go through what we do to, because honestly, it's been a very long time since we did that as a commission. Um, and as part of that, we had a space to talk about the rules. Um, and now keep in mind, it's a workshop, so we can't vote on anything anyway, but for us to, to go through what our rules are and why they are the way they are and have a discussion about that, which we can do. Now, it's not, that piece is not intended to be, you know, a half a day. Uh, but since it was already there, when Commissioner Book placed the, uh, the item on the agenda, rather than us doing a spot, let's hear from everybody and make, make changes, the idea was, let's try to move it to the next thing that has an agenda item that is similar to this, or we might do something like that. I'd be happy to move this forward to a general policy meeting at some point when there's been enough time to do some engagement about it. I, I, I will tell you that some of the ways that we do things are the, many of the things that, that, that we do, we do because of years of, of learned behaviors on both sides. Um, if we're going to, to, beg your pardon? If we're going to, to hear lots of engagement on this, I think that's a really good thing and we should make sure that it is lots of engagement at that point. Um, and I'm fine with, uh, maybe putting this on the general policy, um, or do another workshop later on, although we can't vote at workshops, so I'm happy to make it a GPC item at some future point when staffs had an opportunity to put together a plan for how we move this forward, how we do the engagement on it.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I, I think that would probably be, it would yield a better result in the long run. Um, the reason I said let's do it, um, uh, at the retreat is because we already had an agenda item to walk through how we do that on, at that point on the retreat.
Thank you for that response. And I'd certainly welcome any other comments from my colleagues. Or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, uh, so, and, and if, without, without exception, if nobody has an issue with it, we'll just, uh, ask the clerk to, uh, to agenda that, uh, for a future GPC and, and we'll have that discussion when we have the planning session for GPCs and we, we can pick a time and, uh, and a process, uh, for doing that. In the meantime, if you have questions, if you have ideas, email us. Um, by far the best way to get information to me, I don't know about anybody else, but by far the best way to get information to me is to send me an email. I may read your email at three o'clock in the morning, but I read your emails. Um, the, to me, the least effective way to interface is at the lectern, because that's at the last minute, we've already done homework when we walk into this room. So reaching out via email or setting up meetings or anything like that, phone calls, that is so much more useful and effective to me as a decision maker than, than the, than the lectern is. I mean, that's a count the number of people who spoke sort of thing as opposed to, and I'm just being entirely honest with you, I mean, I could tell you something else if you want to hear it, but I don't think it would be right. I, I would rather be able to ask you questions and go back and reread what you sent than get a one-shot at the, at the lectern. And, and we, we don't really have that conversation very often about what methods are most effective to us as individuals. Uh, so I'm glad that, that, that we had that brief conversation about that and, and I look forward to revising it. It has been a couple of years since we, since we did. And there is an enormous amount of research that was done on the topic, um, and I hope the folks will, uh, that, that will make it on to the, uh, the agenda item when we, when we do have that, um, about what other communities do and, I mean, it was exhaustive research on, uh, not only Florida cities, but other cities around the country, how they do, uh, engagement and, and that sort of thing. Okay, Commissioner Book.
Uh, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure that this actually requires a motion.
Okay.
As, as it relates to this action item, but I do feel like there's no time like the present to start, um, uh, perhaps improving in the manner in which we engage, right? That's really, really important. So I would like, uh, that we compile anything that we have and report that actually at the retreat. I'm completely amenable to us maybe formalizing, uh, changes to protocol if it lends itself to that at, for example, a general policy meeting, but I don't want to wait until a general policy meeting to already have heard things that people may be telling us right now every day as we've started, uh, day one.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Or, I mean?
Is that actually a motion?
It doesn't need to be a motion. I mean, yeah.
I, it did not seem to me to be something that required an, an action item and a motion. I just, uh, if that was okay with you, Madam Clerk, um, let's hear what we have right now. Um, there is, um, there is some great benefit to re-establishing trust as quick as possible and re-establishing the, the ability for people to feel valued and that their input is listened to and that we're actively listening. So in that regard, uh, the retreat is perfect to hear what we already have coming before us and what, um, the mayor pro tem said about potentially tweaking or dealing with protocols at a later time would be totally fine, because I don't think we'd be able to tackle that on the retreat, which I think is what, what you said mayor pro tem is, right? That would probably be too time consuming.
Well, plus, you know, what we're reading here and what's here is that the recommendation is that the city commission invite the community to submit written feedback. And so to give them ample time to gather their own thoughts and submit some things to us, you know, I just don't believe that a week is time enough. If we get that out, that this is what we're requesting from them and, you know, they get that understanding, then they have time to bring us what they want us to hear. But thank you.
Okay. So there, there's a thing that, a practice that we have called, um, it's traditional there for a very long time, without exception. In other words, if nobody has, uh, if, if you don't want it, then, then speak up and say, hold on, we should take this and make a motion about it, but it's a without exception sort of thing, uh, and, and that, that's a, a very common practice, uh, not only with us, but, but with other bodies. So that's essentially what, what we've got there is a without exception situation, because nobody seems to have an issue with it. Although Commissioner Eastman has his light on.
I, I, I have no issue with that. Um, I did want to say, as, 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 as three new commissioners, um, one of the things I've been spending my time, because I've had about three and a half months since being elected, is really, um, there's been a tremendous amount of work, Commissioner Ward, uh, Mayor Ward now, sorry, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned, um, the, the policy note, uh, that was done on this. Um, I, if, if staff would please send that to the three new commissioners and just, um, and I would just encourage our staff, if there's anything like this that's coming up or things on here, um, we, I, I, I know there's been a lot of work and time and energy that's been put into this. I don't want that institutional knowledge lost over this time, so, uh, please feel free to send that over to, to myself and Commissioner Willis and Commissioner Book, so that we have that, um, so that we have that backup, we know that information. So thank you.
Commissioner Book.
So just closing, I think what the mayor pro tem said was right, the time is short and so I appreciate, I didn't think about that. Um, but also the ability to use our new marketing director to get our information, get even more feedback is, is a really good one, so thanks for that.
All right. Anything else with, uh, with this item? Uh, Ms. Beatty, you want to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. Um, a cou- a couple of things. Um, you don't, uh, there were comments made earlier about, uh, there were a lot of emails and it wasn't just the people that showed up. I have a couple of comments I'd like to make on this issue that maybe you could institute sooner, um, is, first of all, you've got emails and used to be, uh, when Mayor Braddy was here, he put, he put in- here, he put, he put in place that the commissioner emails were open to the public. You read them, we get to see them. A lot of what goes on strikes me as ways of getting around transparency. Even, you did allow me to speak this time, but sometimes when you do something without emotion, you don't allow the citizens to speak. I think that's not really necessarily good form. So, I think it's really important that you all put your emails so that we can see them. The emails that are here, Commissioner Ariola's gone, Commissioner Book, I looked at his, and it seems that everything he gets is there. Commissioner Chestnut, I don't think I've seen any there recently, and Commissioner Willetts is pretty well caught up. The last one that's published here is on the 3rd. But I think it's really important for the public to be able to see it. This county publishes everything in real time. They don't even have a delay. And over the years, the commissions have reduced the accessibility to public information into the emails, and I don't think that's good form. And if you really want to change things, and you really value citizen involvement, I know that there have been times when I've seen emails about a meeting or something, and they were published like two weeks later. So, you know, if anybody was interested, they couldn't do it. There's a lot of interesting information. I think that when you address this, the public comment, you need to go back to having three times Commissioner Willetts said, "People are working, they can't come here." But this commission, the previous commission, moved citizen comment to 1:00. That almost guarantees that working people can't be there, that people with families. So, I hope you really look at this, trying to include the public. And also, I really have questions about the retreat, because the retreats I've been to, really, I've sat there all day, and the public hardly has any input. You have retreats and workshops, and, you know, you say that that's where we have a chance to speak, but they're not set up that way, so I hope you do it differently. And I am surprised that you set a date without all the commissioners' input, so that they could all be there. Thank you.
We're all done, thanks. Ms. Silva, go ahead. Yep.
So, thank you to Commissioner Book for bringing this up, and I appreciate that, you know, there's an outreach to try to get public input about public input. This was one change that really took, started off seriously in early in 2019, of increasing mechanisms to really, you know, silence questioning and dissent, or even public input. And there are some measures that I could point out. And it got to the point that, this still shocks me to this day, that, one example, the most egregious example of trying to silence public input was Ray Washington. You know, his mask kept falling off, and he took it off at a meeting, and the mayor called a recess, and that was almost two years ago. The city proceeded to get him arrested, sent to jail, and in two years now, he has, they invoked, the state attorney invoked Marcy's law, which is for people to not be able to approach victims of violence, or potential victims of violence. He made no threats, he was not violent. But the city saw to it that he has been prohibited from even addressing any city employee for nearly two years now. And that, to me, is shocking. It's shocking that the city would, and this trial keeps getting put off, put off, put off, put off, put off. It's a really horrible example of trying to silence people you don't agree with, people who have valuable input. This whole city has lots of experience in every realm that you can think of, whether they're, you know, college-educated or not. And it's your job to, as Commissioner Willetts said, represent people, and the way you can do that is by listening, as Carrie Warren said, too. And so, I hope your retreat will be wide open to all kinds of suggestions to bring back the public into the public's house, and make it welcoming, and not rebut what people say after they have their three minutes. There were just a lot of bad habits that came about in the past few years, I would say since the beginning of 2019, that have made this place very tense. And that, you know, I'm hopeful that today will be a new beginning.
Any more public comment? Okay, all right, let's move on to the next item, please.
The next item is 2023-24, Elatua County Legislative Delegation Public Hearing, January 10, 2023, with the recommendation that the City Commission appoint a city commissioner to attend the Elatua County Legislative Delegation hearing. This meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 10, 2023, at 1:30 p.m.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, I've indicated that I would like to speak to the delegation, and traditionally, the mayor is the representative. Certainly, it's a published meeting, so everyone is able to attend. But apparently, we need action on that.
Do you want to raise a motion?
Yes.
I move that we, oh, were you doing that?
I move to appoint Mayor Harvey Ward to be our, blah, 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 to attend the Elatua County Legislative Delegation hearing on our behalf, on January 10, at 1:30 p.m.
Just a second.
Second.
Is there any public comment?
Yeah, does this motion include speaking? I heard him say that.
Yes, ma'am. That's.
Okay. Okay, I just, you speak, as the mayor, you represent the commission, but there's no direction as to the comments, or the subject, or anything. You know, we have a weak mayor system. We have, and I guess, just authorizing, anybody that might be authorized to go and represent the commission and speak, I think there ought to be, yeah.
Madam Manager, yes, go ahead.
State Legislature for the session coming up, so that will be the basis of the messaging from the mayor.
Okay, well, then, maybe the motion should be amended for him to represent the priorities.
Would it be okay if I answered questions when they asked them?
Huh?
Would it be okay if I answered questions when they asked them?
Well.
Would that be all right with you?
I don't know, it depends on, I guess, the question. Are you having a good day? Yeah, sure. But, I mean.
Ms. Beatty, there is some level of tradition that goes back multiple mayors to doing this. It's not, it's not special to me.
Okay, some of the tradition has also included violations of the charter in arrogating unto certain people stuff that isn't, you know, there in your job duties, and, you know, that you've had commissioners in the past that maybe have let this stuff slip through, or haven't challenged it, or, as I watch, sometimes are trained like, "This is the way we've done it by tradition." You know, it's not by tradition, there are reasons, we have rules, policies, and procedures.
I agree with that.
And that, I just, you know, I just like to see them adhere to, and, you know, that's it. I'm not going to go any, thank you very much for your time and allowing me to speak.
Any comments? All in favor? All right, any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
The next item is 2020, 2022-566, petition, LD 2022-000089, City of Gainesville. The applicant requests to amend the City of Gainesville outdoor lighting to include FDOT lighting standards. The proposed amendment to Section 30-2.1 and Section 30-6.12 of the Land Development Code, Chapter 30 of the City of Gainesville Code of Ordinances, will update the city's lighting standards for consistency with FDOT lighting standards, with the recommendation that the City Commission adopt the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a presentation ready for this at second reading? We don't normally do that. Okay.
Mr. Persons, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I? Mr. Persons? Is Ms. Su want to make the presentation?
No, we've already given a presentation in the second reading. We're here to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Are these questions, or is it a motion?
No, I just want to make a motion.
Okay, let's hear from the public first, and then we'll come back and hear the motion. Okay, all right. Commissioner Chestnut, you're up first.
Thank you. Move that City Commission adopt the proposed ordinance 2-2022-566, petition, LD 2200089. Second.
There's a motion, the second. Commissioner Sacco. Okay, all right. Roll call, I believe.
Commissioner Willetts. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Book.
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously. I believe that is the last item on our very brief afternoon agenda that we were going to have. Okay, that takes us to commission comment. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. One, bringing it up now because it deals with the holidays, and I'd like to suggest that the City of Gainesville look at holding a holiday parade. My son and I participated in the Elatua, City of Elatua Parade during the holidays, very well-received in their community. And I think it would be an opportunity for us to provide that for our citizens as well. I'd like to refer this to the charter officers, and let them work out and decide who takes the leadership role on this particular issue. So.
Mr. needs to justify that Zariya.
Oh, okay. Then I have another one for Zariya. I have another.
So, without exception, staff.
Without exception to refer that. And then, the second referral, still dealing with the holidays, is I'd like to see how the city can become more involved with the Hanukkah celebration, Kwanzaa, and then the holiday parade would be the Christmas. But I participated in the Kwanzaa celebration, and I was thinking that the city could take a leadership role on the first night of Kwanzaa, which is Umoja, unity, unity, and hopefully, there's something that we could do. So, I'd like to refer this to our Equity Director, and perhaps he could come back with the recommendation for how we could manage to have more participation from the city in those three items.
Without exception, I think that's the perfect idea.
Thank you.
Any other commission comment? Commissioner Book. I saw you leaning forward there.
I've spoken plenty. I did just want to say that there was a question at the very beginning of the afternoon from Mr. Scott about the salary and raises of the City Commission, and that has actually been asked to be agended for a future City Commission meeting. So, I simply, it's just an information thing. Beyond that, very excited to serve.
Very good. So, I am thrilled to be working with you all, and as I said this afternoon, I don't expect that we will, this morning, rather, I don't expect that everything is always easy. Sometimes it is, sometimes we can have a good laugh, and I enjoy that. For those of you who are new to the dais, I will tell you that the past five and a half years that I've spent working here have been extremely rewarding to me as a person, and I hope that they are to you as well. The good that we can do from this building and from this dais exceeds nearly any other good that you can do in this community. The impact that we can have on individuals' lives in our community and make our neighbors' lives better makes just about anything that gets in the way of it seem insignificant. So, I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to continue to serve, and I'm glad to serve with all of you, and I look forward to your input. We're going to disagree sometimes, but again, people of goodwill can disagree without being disagreeable, so thank you for that. We'll move on. All right.
You forgot your motion.
What's that? You're absolutely right, I did. Without exception, I'd like for the clerk to schedule a workshop to help train us on land use and zoning, and Mr. Persons did a terrific job with that a few years ago, and I would benefit from going through that again, and I recommend it to the rest of us, so if nobody has an issue with that, Madam Clerk, if you would go ahead and move forward for that. All right, thank you all. We're adjourned.